This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
Sure, all right, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee, and I'll start with roll call attendance, Ms. Barlow. Brenda, I. Ms. Kenny?
Kenny present.
Mr. Menino?
Menino present.
And Ms. Stanser?
Stanser present.
And Hall present. Back to you, Chair McDonald.
And seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 6:32 PM. I will take the roll call, Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer present.
And McDonald present. And now seeing a presence of a quorum of the region school committee, I'm calling to order that meeting also at 6:32, according to my clock. So please stay present when I call your name. Mr. Demling?
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord present.
Mr. Menino?
Menino present.
Ms. Seager?
Seager present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer present.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser present.
McDonald present. And Mr. Sullivan? Don't think he's here yet. Okay, so we are now to order. Our first order of business is to approve minutes for a meeting that didn't happen. So so with the committee's permission, we'll move on to the next order. And welcome, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, can you hear us? Yep. Great. So moving on to our next order of business, we have public comment. And because we had to cancel our or postpone our meeting from Tuesday, August 4th, tonight, we have the public comment that had been originally submitted for that meeting, as well as a few other items that were submitted for tonight's meeting. And so I will start with the voice messages.
Hi, my name is Dejana Raito. I live in the town of Amherst, and I would like to have Sia to discuss a vote and a vote of starting all remote classes. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Maria Aquino, and I live at Calley, Massachusetts. I would like to ask the school committee to vote for our remote learning, to start the remote learning for all the safety of the student. Please start the year as a remote learning. We need the student to be safe. Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
I have two voice messages from the same person and the same phone number, so I'm playing the one that was received most recently. And they were received within six minutes of each other.
My name is Liz. I live in Holyoke, but I work for the Amherst Regional Schools. I work in a specialized special education program, and I am calling to encourage you to support a full remote return back to school in the fall for the safety of our students, as well as our staff. I would also encourage you to think about how you are meeting today virtually for the safety of yourselves, as well as your family. I hope that we would use those same standards when it comes to our students' health and the staff's health. I would also like to look at the Phase 1 population that is returning back to school. First, it is our most marginalized group of students. I would hope that we don't put their lives in jeopardy just to be returning back to school. I think people need to support those students the most and keep their lives, as well as the other lives of the students, at a very, very high standard. Thank you.
My name is Lillian Araya. I am a parent who came from Fort River School in Amherst, and I want to say that I am considered to vote to start the year as remote learning for the safety of our students and also for the safety of our staff. Thank you.
And now I'll share the written comments. And just as a reminder, this document, this full document is or will be posted on on the website. Are you seeing the document? Does it say? Okay, thank you. The comments that were received for Tuesday were posted on Tuesday or Wednesday morning, so those are available. The new comments will be posted, and this entire document will be posted as soon as possible. I will add, this next comment was received, was forwarded to me in Spanish. Because I don't read Spanish, I translated it. I just used the Google Translate in my email, so I'm sharing that document for others who may not also read Spanish, but I'm showing both. Okay.
Noting this, this comment was played as voice message at our meeting on July 21st, so I'm not going to scroll slowly through it. This text, like I said, is included in the document that will be posted on the website. And the same goes for this one, which was also submitted and played by voice message. So this is the text of it, which is available online. So just for for folks who did not watch. Our meeting a week ago when I discovered that I had all of these emails, the public comment emails that got filtered into spam. I just want to say publicly that I've created a filter in my and my ARP's email. That any email that comes in with the subject line public comment is never sent to spam and gets flagged as public comments so that I will see those. So as just as a reminder, if you do want to submit public comment for any of our meetings, please do so by sending email with that subject line public comment. So that it does get flagged and does not get filtered into spam. Or our voice line is always open as well and you may record a voice message at any time up to 3pm in the day of our meetings. And with that. I will turn it over to Dr. Morris for our superintendent's update.
Thank you. So I received a number of questions from committee members, individual committee members about distance learning or virtual education. Term I'd like to start using for it. And part of that's because in any of the phasing models that were presented, the majority, the significant majority of students would start the year in that model. So I was gonna do slides and I think you're pretty sick of slides and things that I've written, so I'm just gonna go oral on that. And as most of you know, there's a third meeting of the night for me, so I think I think we're good on slides. The first thing that I want to share is that there's been a actually international issue with getting enough securing enough Chromebooks. There was a supplier in a specific country that was found to be employing child labor. So a bunch of Chromebooks that were sent to this country have now been taken back because they're legal under international law. I want to publicly thank Jerry Champagne, who has been amazing at finding other vendors and other retailers. It is affecting many schools across the country as well as in Massachusetts. Desi set up a model where we could buy Chromebooks through them. That would come in late September. Jerry got found Chromebooks from, they come from a different country, so they don't have, there's there's no supplier issues that way that will be here in early September. So you know, between the iPads that we're purchasing for kindergarten students and Chromebooks that Jerry was able to find a supplier for, I think will be in good shape. But you may all hear that, that there is a Chromebook shortage and that is a true thing and just really appreciate staff working all sorts of hours to try to make that happen. So we keep our fingers crossed, but it's a major retailer, we're able to find them and the estimated time of arrivals early September. When we get a little bit later to calendar, you'll see that that'll be assuming it's on time, well in time for when the school year would start, given the change in the calendar at the state level. So then talking a little bit more about virtual education planning. So I don't want to rehash, we had a meeting where we spent a lot of time about surveying from the spring and what went well and some concerns. So a summary from the spring was that families and actually staff, most of these were aligned between family, staff and students. Felt like there was not enough direct instruction. So last year, the guidance from Desi was much more a resource model, particularly at the K to eight level. And so that was a major concern. There's a lot of concerns about relationship building and how to maintain relationships, particularly as we enter a new school, you're starting new relationships online. There was concerns about consistency and alignment that actually played out, I think in some of the public comments, I saw that as well. Concerns about not enough synchronous calls that that families were getting and also that there wasn't a set schedule. When it was predictable and reliable when things would happen. There was also a concern about large groups, like full classes, particularly at the elementary level, just being insignificant insufficient to engage in dialogue and learning. That if you have 21 students on a call, much like we have a lot of people on this call, it ends up being what we're doing, which is one person talking. I will say that we experienced that in my administrative team as well. I had an administrative team meeting with seven people on it today and the level of dialogue was wildly different than even if there was 14 people. It happened to just be elementary principals and a couple others. And so I don't think that's a kid thing. I think that's an everyone thing in terms of having meetings online. So you know, there was a lot of concern and a lot of dissatisfaction with how the spring went. I, like I said, then I want to say that this was emergency distance learning. It wasn't virtual education and we want to make sure that for all students who at any point in next year that we're providing a much different level of service. We had groups, staff groups work last spring. They came up with guiding principles for distance learning in the fall. They think they're really strong and they're the foundation for our planning. Additionally, the last week or the week before, I forget, Desi came out with guidance on the distance learning or virtual education. A couple of the changes is that direct instruction is the model. It's not resource delivery. So at the elementary level, you may remember distance learning plans, which were a list of things that families could do. That is not what the expectations are for next year. There's an expectation for regular synchronous calls, for a structured daily schedule, for accountability on all ends, for attendance and work completed and grading. There's also the expectation that full curriculum standards are being taught. Last spring, the expectation was roughly half, half of the day of work. And that is significantly different. So the expectations are much more robust. We did get information from the commissioner that he plans the the board likely will push Desi to audit any district that's in a distance learning model to ensure that it's going, is working effectively next year. And that's okay, because we're all new at this and we're getting better at it and I'll get into how we would train folks in a bit. And so, you know, one thing we did is we we've created and posted teacher leader positions for this that would do some work in August, but I have a partial release to their schedule in the fall. At the elementary and at the secondary level. Also, if you look at, for instance, the high school assistant principal position, try to imagine how we can have someone, it's an interim position. Take on some some leadership and support, you know, Mr. Siddique and Dr. Gramacki on that. And we're building our internal capacity all the time. So we planned for professional development before the school year. Again, I'm getting the cart in front of the horse a bit, but there are 10 days now for professional development that there weren't, based on an agreement that Desi has shared. And so we're looking to find someone who can help us with that, with a really deep embedded, not rushed. Perspective on pedagogy. There's technical pieces we'll have to do. But actually, you know, what I believe is that we'll take the time to work on deep online pedagogy and the technical pieces aren't going to be wildly different. Google meets is getting more features. But a lot of that's going to be pretty similar. Google Classroom is there at the at the primary grade levels. Based on staff feedback, we did look into Seesaw, which is a much more user friendly tool at the primary grade levels. But really what the the professional development we're looking for is how do we support staff and humanize the virtual environment? How do we help them build strong relationships with students they may not have met before? And how do we prioritize relationships and student support in that setting? Secondly, and I think this is really important, and I know it's going to sound jargony, but wayfinding. How do we learn how to build engaging, navigable and student centered online learning experiences, especially for our most vulnerable learners? One of the things we know is that for all learners, this was a new experience, working in a virtual space. And much like our schools, if you walk into a school, there's a sign. And if you walk into a classroom, you'll see learning objectives and you'll see what the homework assignment is. And students know where to find things. That was really difficult last year. And we want to provide really in-depth training for our staff in that way. Third, third really critical piece is student agency. How do students take ownership of their learning and increase the engagement? One of the things that we continued heard in the student survey was really clear on this, was that engagement went down as students went into a virtual environment. And so again, we want to make sure that we're training our staff, offering professional development, that we can be much more engaging for students. And the same thing we want in person, we want students owning their own learning. You've heard that a lot, particularly at the elementary level. If you look at their school improvement plans, for those of you and who work in the elementary districts, you remember that from last year, that that's a critical component. And we really want to work on what does that look like in an online environment? And finally, what do assessments look like? How are we getting formative assessments? There are some advantages. About how assessments could work in a virtual space. And so that's really some of the foundational work that we have planned. We are planning for staff before the school year. We want to work with people who have been virtual teachers before and to do this. And Mr. Manino, I see your hand. If it's okay with the chairs, I'd just like to finish because I'll be done in a second with this part of the superintendent update. And I know I'm going on longer than I usually would, but I think there were a number of questions from committee members, so I wanted to go into detail. So you know, we're really looking to develop clear models that include the Desi requirements. And include a high focus on small group synchronous calls as well as asynchronous mini lessons, consisting with the guiding principles. If you go back to those guiding principles, really it is a lot of the, they are what they are. They're the guiding principles that are helping us develop models. We're not looking at a model that would have student screen time being six hours a day. Want to be really clear about that. We're also not looking at models that would have screen time being one hour a day. We're trying to find that right balance of asynchronous lessons, synchronous calls and student work that allow for the right balance. And and so that that's really what we're looking for. But I think the thing, if there's one take home for folks who are watching, significantly more direct instruction, significantly more structure and predictable structure and smaller group sizes. Those are the the really big takeaways that we want to do and we want to support our structuring the day where our staff can be more successful with that. We'll have more soon on that. And but I wanted at least, I felt like there was enough questions where I wanted to give a little more thorough. Sharing, probably even if we meet next week, I'll be able to share much more details on that. But I at least wanted to share a broad overview of the work because how much of our work, I think rightfully so, has been focused on all the health and safety pieces of being in school. And when all the plans include a significant number of students being in remote, you know, I was remiss in not sharing it, but we're all trying to do lots of things simultaneously here. So forgive me on that and I'm open to any questions on that before I have a couple of other things to share on the update.
And Mr. Manino and then Ms. Barlow.
I infer from your comments that the person doing the direct instruction will also be doing the distance learning. I've asked this question before because I'm concerned about, you know, how many days a week do we expect a teacher to teach?
Yep. So the, in our phasing models, there would be no one who would be doing both unless they've requested to do both. There are some related service providers who have indicated and some some very specific roles who have indicated that they might be interested in coming in for some students. While working with other students virtually, but in terms of the core instruction, like the second grade teacher, the second grade teacher would be either teaching virtually. Or teaching in person on a day, they wouldn't be both like, you know, and I'll be clear, I think I've said this before, but I want to be really clear because I'm convinced of it. That we wouldn't have like cameras set up in the room where some students would be accessing live teaching and some students would be actually in the distance learning because they're different pedagogies. They're different instructional models. And so And so there has to be, staff have to do one at a time or another. They can't do both. In my opinion, effectively, I think you end up meeting no kids needs if you're trying to do that. So I feel really strongly on that topic. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
Mr. Demley.
Yeah. So I think from a parent perspective, um, these updates are gonna, are, are gonna top out until we get to a point where we can, where you or, or the teachers or the principals can say, okay, specifically detailed, what is this going to look like? I think at this point, people get that we acknowledge that emergency learning wasn't what we want for the fall and that we're going to make it better. But what is that? And so I don't know if you could talk about schedule at this point, whether that will be part of the public forums. And also this, this notion of parent training, I understand that like the communication, the engagement will be better. And we don't expect parents to be teachers per se, but you know, we've, we've mentioned before that as the grades get younger, the need for parent support gets higher, right? And so, um, uh, what, what are we expecting of parents, uh, of, of those 90% of kids that are going to start, um, the school year, uh, fully remotely?
Yeah. So, um, I think the schedules will probably be able to get to next week at the secondary level. I don't anticipate them looking wildly different than the three by three block. The nice thing about that model is it allows for more dedicated focus. Uh, so it works, uh, I think from a public health perspective, in my opinion, it works. It's the best model, but also from a distance learning, I also believe it's the best model. Uh, at the elementary level, I think it's a little more complex and, and we met about it this morning as I referenced. Um, that was the primary focus of our meeting. And I think by next week, we should have at least some mock-up drafts, um, of, of what that might look like. Um, the alignment piece in particular, at the elementary level is something we, uh, feel really strongly about improving on. So I think the second question you asked is about the parent training. And I'm not trying to be, uh, uh, I don't know the right word. I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think I would, I would offer caregiver training as the term. Because one of the things that's going to be really different than the spring is that many families won't be able to stay home. It may be older sibling, uh, you know, in the spring, the vast majority of families were home. That will not be true in the fall. And so we do want to do parents guardians, absolutely, but we're going to broaden that term because, uh, we, we know that that's not the case. Uh, and this, and we've heard from families and we know that just people are having to go back to work. Um, and many more than we're, we're home in the spring. So we do want to do again, that wayfinding and that's both a student piece, but also an adult piece as well. Um, and, and I think that's where we get into the conversations about what's the appropriate kind of learning management system at the primary grades versus when we get even to middle to upper elementary and beyond. Um, and we heard that from staff last year, loud and clear that, you know, Google classroom, you know, some people felt more effective. But for, for students, you know, who are going to be in the, I mean, just being candid, they're going to be in the realm of being more responsible. Uh, and I don't mean responsible because we're asking, but they're going to be, they're going to have to be. Cause more families are going to be back at work and there's going to be, you know, caregivers that may not be parents guardians. They may not be siblings and maybe, you know, um, more typical childcare providers, uh, who are in the role. So we want to make sure that we're, uh, offering a lot of training for, um, for all caregivers, but also, uh, trying to make things accessible for students. We know at K to 12, that was really hard. Uh, and that's not a critique of teachers. That was the fact that we were in an emergency situation with like 72 hours to plan for it. And then once you set up that structure, you sort of have to live with it. It's really hard to change those structures once you're in them. And that's the really great thing about having those days before the school year is being able to set up those structures. Having them be consistent across schools, uh, and across districts. So that we can, uh, we can really provide both synchronous and asynchronous training for caregivers. Um, and it could be that caregivers change, but if we're recording those trainings, uh, that they're accessible for all.
Any other questions on this, this first part, Ms. Spitzer?
Um, just one question about the remote learning option. Um, you know, when, when we're delivering stuff in person, it's building based and the staff you have at the building is the staff that you have. But in thinking about these remote options, is there any thought of using staff to kind of cut, cut across? Because there are going to be some students who are going to be remote for the entire time, regardless of what phase we, we, we choose. So are we gonna, are we looking at ways to kind of across and maybe even districts, I go, I'm not sure about like Pelham and Amherst. If there's even a possibility that somebody living in Pelham could be doing remote learning with an Amherst teacher. I, I, I'm just curious about how, now that we don't have the constraints of building, are we, are we going beyond that at all?
Yes. Short answer is yes, we're looking at models. I can't give you great details, but you know, our meeting this morning, of course, was inclusive of Lee, um, our principal at Pelham. And, uh, we absolutely want to do that. And, and one of the things that at the elementary level in particular, uh, the concerns around alignment were very real and our elementary teachers teach with the mo, with few exceptions, all the subjects. And so I think from a staff support perspective, we also have to be really realistic. We're expecting, last year we were expecting power standards, very low key, half of what we normally would do. That is not the case this year and we, to be successful, in my opinion, we're going to have to be collaborative. We're going to have to work as teams and we're going to have to have more discrete roles for individuals across grade levels, across schools and across districts. And I think you, you highlighted two of them than we have before, because space, the place doesn't matter, right? We want to retain that school feeling. We want people to have familiar adults that they see every day that are predictable. We don't want to make elementary kids have high school schedules where, you know, every period they're with a different teacher. But we believe there are ways where we can be successful in doing that. And actually I think harnessing our resources that way is going to be much better for students and much better for our faculty and staff. Because it, it's really a different model. Uh, and we're really looking at, you know, can we develop asynchronous lessons that are actually shared, right? That, you know, I had a, a middle school teacher, for instance, share an anecdote last spring where, you know, there were four or five staff members all recording the same reading of the same passage that they were going to teach in their class. That's a really inefficient use of time. Um, you know, that the, like, there, uh, it would be much more efficient if one person was recording that. And everyone else was planning their synchronous follow-up and, and more mini lesson than that. And we have to be working collaboratively. Um, I think, you know, talking to, uh, schools that have been doing this a long time as their core mission. Uh, one of the things they say is you really have to break down those virtual walls because you're not in a building anymore. And so, so much of our focus is where in school buildings, there's literal or figurative walls that get built. And we really have to take those down if we're going to be serious about providing, uh, all the curriculum that we need to do and we need to support kids and families. So, sorry, long-winded answer to, I could have just said yes, um, but I actually think it's a really important point. That this should, this ought to look different than it did last spring and not just in the emergency ways. But we really do need to have more discrete roles and, and more collaboration. Uh, because we have a lot of staff and we're, we're staffed to be in buildings. That's the way we define our staffing. And so if we're going to be staffing, uh, with the same staff to be in a virtual environment, we really need to change roles and responsibilities pretty significantly. Uh, to be effective, you know, virtual schools wouldn't have our staffing model, you know? Uh, and that's not a knock, that's saying, saying we have too many staff. This is nothing about budget. It's that they wouldn't define roles that way because it's not structured that way. And so for us, we need to think really differently about that and we're starting to have those conversations. And again, if you go back to those guiding documents, um, guiding principles document, they talk a lot about different forms of collaboration and teamwork. And none of that, none of what I'm saying is new. It was really in that document, uh, you know, all the way back in June. It's just more expanding on it.
Any other comments, questions?
I just got a, a, a message that the feed is out and that, um, from somebody watching outside the meeting. Is anybody else getting messages about issues with the feed?
On TV or online?
Um, not sure.
I don't, I don't know why I, I don't, I'm not, I don't have any messages, but maybe that would be helpful with media to know.
I'll find out and, and I'll put in the chat. Sorry to interrupt.
So if I could, uh, go on, so this is a little bit of an awkward, I have a little bit of a, uh, sharing and, and it's because the meeting got canceled Tuesday night because of the storm and how many people were out of power, speaking of feeds going. Um, and, um, so I know you're both talking about phasing and the larger document. Um, and, and those are interrelated, but I, I think I'd rather make a, a bit of a statement now, if that's okay with the chair. Um, because I think they feed into that next conversation. Uh, I know there's things between those, but I just think it, it makes sense. So, you know, what's presented tonight, um, is the result of working collaboratively with the school committee over the last few months to develop a lengthy document that was in the packet. I apologize how lengthy the document is, but there's, there's a lot there. And, and so, um, just a couple of notes that we are adding a little more robust section on ELL programming. Just, you know, we tried to get, it's 47 pages or 45 pages of text plus all the presentations. And we got as far as we can get, uh, for tonight, but, uh, please know that there is more on ELL coming. I think also supposedly Desi's offering feedback on the initial, the quick plans that were submitted. Um, so I don't know what that will say. But I want to say, I understand how challenging this is for everyone. Um, and, you know, the goal is to develop the best plan possible based on the direction of the school committee. Whether that's what we've prepared for tonight or whether there's a school committee, you know, offers different advice. And, and the staff from the administrative staff, you know, we're looking for direction, um, so that we can do our job to make sure we're planning effectively for students. Um, I know the situation's evolving and decisions have and will continue to evolve along with it. And if changes are needed in the document, I'll be ready to make them. So I do think, you know, I, I don't want people to feel like, um, the document's done and, and therefore the school committee, uh, has no opinion. That's far from the case. It's that we have a timeline when we need to submit to Desi. Uh, and we needed to prepare something for you to respond to. Um, but I, I got some feedback and I just wanted to be really, really clear that, um, this has been, I think will continue to be a partnership between the, the staff and the school committees. Uh, I know there's three separate school committees on the call and you think three school committees may have three different opinions. It's happening in some other multi-district, uh, organizations like ours. And, uh, you know, I just want to share that, you know, we're dedicated to doing the best possible within the school committee guidance that we receive. Uh, so I want to share a few things that are really clear to me. So the situation will continue to evolve with the public information, public health information. You know, tonight's not an end, uh, whatever happens, but really it's a place to offer formal direction so we can be prepared. Um, and I think you all agree with that. I know you've shared it in the past. We certainly do and, and we follow, you know, all of us follow every single day, what's going on in Massachusetts. And then, you know, every Wednesday, what's going on in our towns and, and Western Massachusetts in particular, because it breaks it out a little more every week. The second is there's no great decisions to be had, right? If there was, all the school committees across the state would be making the exact same decision and that doesn't seem to be happening. Um, and it's really trying to make the best decisions available, given the information you have. And no decision will be as good as the worst decision school committees have made in the past, right? That, that there's, you know, it really is trying to make the best of it. And so I want to say that publicly because I know there's a lot of advocacy and some of it, you know, within public comments. You've received other emails and lots of different opinions and you're in a really difficult situation. And I want to acknowledge that publicly, um, that some people have come to me like, oh, you know, you've such a terrible job to be superintendent during this time. And, and perhaps that's true, but I feel like, um, your, uh, your jobs are really hard to be decision makers, uh, on these weighty issues. And so wherever you all land, I just want to acknowledge and, and hopefully the public will as well. That I know how many emails I get and phone calls from you all, and I know how seriously you're taking this. And I want to publicly acknowledge that. I think that, uh, not so much fun on the third one, but there's, there's wider disagreement on these issues than any other topic in my 19 years in the district. And that all 19 years were in Amherst, Pelham or the region. So that's saying something. And, and so I just want to acknowledge that there's really diverse thoughts and opinions, you know, on this matter. And, and on that topic, there's a group of Rhode Island superintendents who came out with a, a letter that I thought was good. But there's one particular section I wanted to read, uh, and I'll quote them. "In the midst of all this uncertainty, one thing remains certain, and that is that no two households are identical. Every family and employee in our school districts has a unique set of circumstances, needs, resources, supports, employment conditions, socioeconomic realities, medical history and myriad, myriad other variables. These factors underscore our need to focus deeply on equity in all of our proposals and decisions." And I, I really like that just because it really describes some of what the diversity of opinions that we continue to receive or I do. And it also underscores the challenges of the situation logistically and educationally. You know, we've been committed to supporting this process to the best of our abilities and moving forward is critical at this juncture in time. And the last thing I want to say is that I keep coming back and I've talked about it before to the key concept for me of humility. I consider all the different perspectives. I know that you all do as well. Those that come through public comments, come through phone calls, come through private emails and come through, uh, you know, all the different ways that we receive that feedback. And my commitment and our commitment, our administrative staff's commitment, uh, through your guidance tonight and beyond is to be part of developing the best plan possible for students. And, and that's what our commitment is. And so, uh, we're really looking for this guidance, you know, when we go through those documents, I'm happy to answer any questions of what's in the documents, what's not in the documents. Other thoughts you have, and we'll try to give you the best guidance that we have and best information you have. Um, there is no certainty, you know, and I think that is, you know, really the hard thing. And the only certain is, is I like the Rhode Island superintendents is that we're going to make the best, uh, whatever decisions you all make. Um, we're going to do, we're going to do the best thing that we can for kids. And we just, you know, collectively feel for you, uh, as decision makers on this topic. And I feel like wherever you land, uh, wherever that is, whether it's consistent with what's presented tonight, whether it's different from that. Um, you know, I just want to say for myself, I really know how deeply and seriously you're taking all these issues and you're weighing them. Um, and I really thank you all for the service. Other than Brenda, no one signed up for this. Brenda, you know, you sort of did from how you joined the committee. Uh, perhaps, uh, you know, perhaps Bethany as well. But, you know, uh, you know, there's no, uh, pandemic policy that you can go back to in the school M A S C guidebook. It's, oh yes, during a pandemic, this is the obvious decision-making tree. And it's really hard and, and I just, I, I know, uh, you get a lot of competing, uh, feedback from, from folks. Uh, and I just wanted to really publicly acknowledge that. And I'll stop here, but I, I just think it was worth saying, um, to all of you.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I, I lost it listening to that. So, um, great. Uh, I think, uh, are you, it is so, Ms. Lord.
Hello. Thank you. I just have a quick question for, um, Dr. Morris. And that's around clarification as a new school committee member. What we're voting on tonight is the plan that we're sending to Desi. We're still, right? We're not voting on what happened September 16th because there's still metrics and things we're going to have to figure out or, or am I incorrect?
Right. So I think between tonight and September 16th, a couple of things happen. One is that, um, you know, and I'm not going to speak to specifics about that because that'd be inappropriate, but there's bargaining that needs to happen with our, our units. Um, and public health data may change. And, and I think I'll speak to that a little bit when we get into, uh, some of the phasing models. Uh, you may see that I added some, some, and I'm not, it's draft. It's, you, you're responding to it for the first time. So, uh, I think on both fronts, there are lots of work to happen between now. But what I'm hoping we get tonight with a vote is what gets submitted, which is a direct, a direction. And I, you know, I was on a conference call with the commissioner today and he was really clear about that. The public health data, and they have not set, um, the state may or may not set public health guidance, uh, around opening schools and phasing. Uh, I proposed some draft language that it's just a proposal based on what I'm seeing from other experts in the field. But certainly you could set, um, set that. And, you know, again, if, if the committees make a decision that's inconsistent with the document that, uh, was presented, uh, that's fine. And I'll do some quick editing and, um, again, you know, administratively, uh, not that we don't have opinions, but we're going to make what the school committees decide work, uh, to the best of our abilities. And if that involves, um, the decision that you want to support that document, great. If it's that I need to edit that document based on a vote tonight, that's what we'll do. Um, and, and that's, that's how we work collaboratively with the committees. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions from, uh, for the superintendent?
So I saw there was some questions about, um, whether the streaming is working well. I'm sorry, I was in the middle of my spiel, so, uh, I didn't pick up on that, but I don't know if that issue's resolved. I just want to make sure that we're sharing that publicly. Um, and if the issue's resolved, great. If not, you know, I just want to make sure Amherst media is aware if there is any issues so that we can communicate it to them, because none of us on this call can solve that problem.
Um, I, I think Mr. Demling and Ms. Spitzer are the ones, and, and Ms. Kenny or Barlow, I'm not sure, have been receiving the messages. Mr. Demling?
I think the only thing that we can say definitively is that we have some reports that the streaming is not working. We have some reports that the streaming is working, so.
I just got a update from the person who initially texted me to say it wasn't working online. And now about a minute ago, it started working. So it sounds like maybe Amherst media was able to troubleshoot and solve the problem. So thank you, Amherst media. If that's indeed the case.
Thank you. Any, anything else for the superintendent and his update? Seeing none. Um, in terms of the chair's update, um, I think all of us, um, have received, uh, the flyers and, and, and seen that. But there's, um, on Saturday, uh, the district and we are hosting and the district and we are hosting an information session for families in the South Point area. And that will be outdoors. I can't remember exactly where, where it's going to be held, but it's Saturday at 10:00 AM for residents of the regions around South Point. And the flyer that was posted by the district includes all of the, the neighborhoods that are included in for that information session. The other announcement is a flyer will be published shortly for, great. Streaming is working again. And that there will be a town hall information session and Q and A on Wednesday. I believe we, it's at 5:30. I'm sort of looking at Dr. Morris and Carrie and Ms. Spitzer. With some healthcare medical professionals from the region. And so that flyer will be published very soon, if not already. And that is open to everybody in the district. These four or five medical professionals will be, will share some insight on COVID-19 and then answer questions that families might have as they're thinking about the fall and returning to school or not. And so that is on Wednesday. That is all I have. Ms. Hall, do you have any chairs update?
I don't, not tonight. Thank you.
And now we move on to a school committee announcements. Are there any other announcements? Ms. Lord?
I would like to invite everyone to our school equity task force meeting on Wednesday, August 19th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the committees? Any of the committees? Mr. Harrington?
Not so, not so much an announcement, just, but just to clarify the location of the event Saturday in South Point. The easiest way to state is if you're, you're in this area, it's near the mailboxes. It's the open green area, which is right next to the mailboxes.
Thank you. Any other announcements from anybody in the committees? Not seeing any. Okay. So we'll move on to our new and continuing business. And our first item is postponed from Tuesday, our Fall 2020 Phasing Models. And those phasing models and updated version was in our packet. We looked, we saw briefly some, the presentation from, actually, I can't remember which date. It probably was just last week, but where we looked at the phasing models and so that and the survey responses are in our packet. Dr. Morris, I don't know if you would like to introduce the, the survey and.
Yeah, so I'll, I think I'll present if that's okay. I mean, it's in the packet, but I just think it's easier for me to talk through. There it is. There we go. Is that visible?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just the results, straight out of Survey Monkey of the phasing model. But I organize it by each. I disaggregated by family responses, middle school, high school, student responses, staff responses, and then the aggregate. So if you remember, phasing model one was the most aggressive phasing model with the shortest amount of time between going from phases, going from phase groups. And so Model Two differentiated between elementary and secondary. So the elementary models were a little more aggressive. The secondary was, was slower. And Model Three was the slowest phasing. And so you could see the results of the family responses. The way, at the right side, this is just the way Survey Monkey does it, is it assigns a score of three points for a first place vote, two points for a second place vote, and one point for a third place vote. And, you know, I think like my comments earlier, I'm sorry if people didn't hear them, there's such diversity of opinions. So, you know, the phase in Model One, 50% of families responded that that was their preferred. And then 40, basically 40% said it was at least preferred. There's not often that we get that spread, you know, on that. But this was, these were the results of the family responses. These were middle school, high school student responses. We did not ask elementary students this. And you could see they very well aligned with, with many of the other responses where there's, you know, real diversity. They're a little more muted actually than some of the other responses in terms of some of those. But you could see some real differences. I think it's worth noting because I got this feedback by email as well that we didn't ask about not coming back. But, you know, anecdotally, if you look at the comments, a lot of those folks chose phase in Model Three about not coming back in the fall because it was the slowest phase in. The, here's the staff responses. So there's 149 responses, or 147, excuse me, that answered this question. And you can again see the staff responses. There was a different spread on the staff responses than the students and the families. But kind of interesting to look through on that, especially when you calculate the scores or it gets calculated. And here's the all responses. And so again, I'll leave it to you to do some of the interpretation of that. But here, you know, that was the result. There was no way to qualitatively capture the feedback. Or we struggled to because it was so divergent or so diverse in terms of the feedback on the phase and models. It ranged, I think, from folks who felt like kids, all kids should be back right away. And they were discouraged that there was phase and models to begin with. To the folks who expressed that, you know, there are no phase and model felt sufficient or safe to them. And, and that was true in every single group. That was true in, in the responses from students, the responses from staff, and the responses from families. So we didn't have a qualitative spread because, or summary, because the themes were that people feel really differently. And that was, that was essentially the theme. So when I pause there and then before I get into some revised model based on the feedback and some metrics.
Yep. Dr. Morris, we're, we're seeing in chat and, and the like that we're still having issues with streaming. So I don't know, and it seems to be the streaming, I think, is, is what everybody's saying. So I don't know if there's anything we can.
So why don't I stop?
We can't do anything about it. So I do want us to say out loud that yes, this is being recorded. And will be available through Amherst Media's website and YouTube.
So we did this before. So maybe if what happened before, it didn't solve the issue. But I think it did help when I didn't share the screen.
Okay.
Is it okay if I, it's going to be a little more wordy, but if I describe things orally? Because this is in the packet, this is all information that's on our website in the packet. People hopefully have access to it. And, and I think if, if the committee's okay, I'd prefer to talk about it orally than have people who are streaming it not have access.
Yes, agreed.
So why don't I stop there and see if there's questions about the data?
I just wanted to confirm. There was no way to see about differences at like the elementary versus the middle school, high school level. I mean, I know the students were exclusively elementary, high school. But in terms of grade level, or not grade level, but like elementary versus middle school, high school, we couldn't see a trend that way, could we?
I would, I'm just thinking back. It seemed like the trends were in unrelated to grade level. That, that really it's, yeah, I think that's as much as I can say that, you know, there weren't clear trends that way about phasing models. Even though the phasing models did have different implications, especially phasing model two to three. It did have different implications, elementary to secondary. I think, you know, there was a lot of this question as proxy for whether I would send my child back to school for the parent one, or I would choose to come back as a student. That's my own interpretation, but I did feel like there was a lot of that was driving a lot of the responses.
Ms. Dancer?
I would just like to offer a comment in reading through the qualitative parts of the survey, I felt like a number of people inferred that by only saying there were these phasing models that we were disqualifying remote learning or online learning. Does a little bit of a concern to me.
I would agree.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I mean, I just, just general comment. I mean, in, in terms of, so this was a lot to get through in terms of the survey content. So we obviously are not presenting the 200 plus comments that we got back from the survey, which, thank you, Dr. Morris, for not presenting them as part of the slides. But, um, but that was a huge piece of this feedback. We had over 1,000 respondents. So I'm, I'm glad, actually, we had a little bit of a delay so that we could get through that. And I mean, you know, it's just, I don't know how other committee members have, you know, experienced the digestion of this as, as a piece of the, the whole public input. You know, experience, but you know, I kind of look at it as, as like another piece of the puzzle, right? And, and all these various ways that the public has of expressing their preference are, are all limited and have their own advantages and disadvantages in different ways, right, of like, like public comment and emails. And like all surveys, this is limited. It didn't reach everyone. I don't, I don't look at this as like a firm conclusion of like what everyone thinks. But, but the number of responses is pretty good, you know, 120 staff is, is pretty good sample size. Over 700 parents is, is very good sample size. So I wouldn't draw like super exactness from it. But like when I look for clear trends, it's, I, I find it pretty helpful in terms of seeing, you know, one, what, what superintendent noted, which is within each of those groups, the parent, I'm, I'm sorry, the family group, the, the staff group and the, and the student group. But there's pretty strong disagreement among even, even what the top preference is, right? Even, even if you look at the most extreme case of, of what the top preferences of the, of the, the family of where, where Model One, Model One only has 50% support. That means that half of all the family respondents of those 700 plus respondents preferred something other than Model One. And, you know, those are, those are mutually irreconcilable, right? And, and same thing with, with, with staff and student preference. And so those, so that's very hard to resolve. And, and then the other, the other big take home for me was how much Model Two stood out as, as this compromise choice in the middle. Something like when you look at the percent choices, I'm sorry, the percent numbers for Model Two as the second choice. It's, it's really like the runaway favorite. You know, with, with, with the percentage, you know, 72% with the family and 69% with the staff. And then, you know, the, the thing I looked at was, if you look at, you know, if, if Model Two is one of your top two choices, it's, it's even more extreme. It's 99% of staff. Model Two is either the first or second choice. And 91% of families, Model Two is either the first or second choice. So, you know, there's, there's a lot more to be said about, about the models and the different variations. And, you know, we'll get into that, but I just, from, from a survey point of view, as a piece of the puzzle where, where we don't want to be drawing super exact conclusions. I thought that that general trend standing out so strongly among those three groups as that compromise piece was, was pretty notable.
I, I just want to add, I think, you know, going this kind of builds on Ms. Spitzer's comment or question about sort of the breakout between elementary and secondary. Because I, while I agree that the vast majority, you know, chose Model Two as their second choice for, for parents or families with only secondary students. There's no difference between Model Two and Model Three. So in a way, you know, it's without knowing sort of the difference between, you know, how, how folks were thinking about their, their individual students. It's hard to say that two is, it's a compromise for elementary families, I would say. Because those, those, for an elementary, for elementary students, there's definitely a difference, a big difference between one, two, and three. But I don't, and I, I, being a little selfish there because I have, my kids are in secondary schools. And so I'm like, well, two or three doesn't really matter from a, from my family's perspective. Are there any other questions or comments on the data? Ms. Lord?
Yes. I think what I got some feedback from reading that was that maybe people also wanted the choice of remote learning. So just to present that this is saying one or two because, or three, because those were the only choices. And that's why there was confusion, like, are we, yeah, just saying. There wasn't the choice to say all remote, or go ahead, Dr. Morris. Oh, I'm not sure.
No, I think that's right. And, and we had lots of internal conversations and we intentionally didn't ask that because that would be a separate question on a separate survey. And just because a family or a staff member or somebody would believe it should be all remote, we didn't want to preclude them or exclude them from being able to weigh in on what the best phasing model might be, right? So, so it actually, I think, would have shifted the data if we had that option. And that's a different question. But once you do that, then all of a sudden, you don't get to vote on phasing model that you think might be the best. And so, you know, one could argue it either way, but we do intend, if, if there's an in-person and a virtual model after tonight, we intend to survey families next week. Actually, you know, perhaps even on Saturday and bring some paper copies to the event. Because families will be there and it might be convenient for them to ascertain what their thoughts are and what they would choose to do. So I think we want to get to that, but we didn't want to exclude them from a data source. And that's sort of what would have happened. And I think then we would also wanted to ask, have asked different questions on our survey. So one could argue it either way, but I think it is, you know, basically when I look, because I get access to all the data. If you look at who voted for question three and who made those comments, or who made those comments that you're talking about, Ms. Lord? They almost exclusively voted for phasing Model Three. That's not to suggest there aren't people who voted for phasing Model Three who don't have that. But I do think that served as proxy to a certain extent for folks who had that opinion. And we just didn't want them to be excluded from the data set. And we also didn't want to ask what felt like next week would be a binding question to families. And to ask it twice in two weeks didn't feel so wonderful for us. And it's a super valid point. I'm not trying to be defensive. I'm just trying to explain the rationale.
Any other questions? Or comments? Ms. Dancer?
So I think I'm, I guess I'm a little confused about what we're doing with the voting or the, if we are going to vote on phasing and how that relates to finding out who would prefer the virtual method. Can, can you explain how those relate to each other?
Sure. So yeah, so this felt better when it was spaced out over two meetings. So I want to acknowledge that point. And so the idea is if the school committees, any of the school committees vote tonight to move forward with a plan that offers the option of in-person, we would then survey families in short order to see what they wanted to do. And that's part of what the town hall that, you know, that Ms. McDonald spoke about. Because we then need to know what staffing we need in person versus distance as well. Just because we offer an in-person option doesn't mean that all students have to take it, right? The families have an option of, of being, of, of choosing virtual education for their child. And so I think the vote tonight, it's a little bit murky for me about how you do that. Because they're sort of, they blend into one another and perhaps some awkward ways that they wouldn't have if they were in two hours nights. And I'm sure someone smarter than me like Ms. McDonald will have a better answer to that question.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I'm smarter than you, but, but I, I tend to think of it this way is if, if we go back, we've, we've been talking about plans and, and we've already voted on pieces of, of, of framework and guidance. So if you go back to, it's in our deck, the framework that, for, for learning for students that we voted a few weeks ago in July, where we talked about the principles where we wanted to ensure staff and student safety. We wanted to maximize. We wanted to maximize in-person learning in the safest, following our safety and health protocols. And we wanted to provide the the best distance learning experience possible and then be flexible to adjust. So those were the four sort of high level principles that we had voted on and agreed. So this phasing model is is with that in mind, where we had said we wanted to maximize in-person learning. We also, in that document, we had provided the app option, as Dr. Morris referenced, that families could, families and students could opt for the full distance. So that doesn't go away by voting on the on the phasing. This phasing model is specifically for that first piece about the in-person learning. So for families who would like to choose the in-person face-to-face learning, this is, this is the timing by which we've, we would outline and sort of bring people back into the school building. In that framework, we also specifically requested this phasing in for that in-person learning. One, to enable staff and educators to develop and and practice and and get the professional development and and work that they need to do to learn the new protocols as well as teaching in the new environment. We also talked about the phasing in terms of the the sort of slow build for practicing and ensuring sort of learning and adherence and comfort with the new in-person learning protocols and transitions and et cetera. So I say all that, that's all just a recap of what we had. So this this phasing is sort of one piece of that puzzle. And the distance learning is still an option for any and all families.
Ms. Spitzer?
I think the tricky thing looking at this data, because I think if you wanted to calculate the standard, like I doubt there's statistically significant winner in this. I think it's completely murky and we wouldn't actually be able to choose a winner out of these three options. The the thing about this, and I fully, I want to acknowledge that I fully understand the reasoning that Dr. Morris presented about the way we've done this and that we haven't focused in on the people who are interested in in-person learning. But I think I'd be really interested to know that had we focused in on those who actually feel like they'd like to come in, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I'm going to say that they probably would have been the group that's more in the same way that you're saying, like, option three is kind of like the proxy for those who are not going to come into the schools until there's a vaccine or until the numbers are so low, you know, much lower than they are today. And so the problem is that if we're designing this to meet everybody's needs, it's actually problematic because they have really different needs. So the person who doesn't have the option of, you know, has a small child and is a frontline worker and can't stay home with that kid is going to have a really strong preference, probably, for that faster model that is in phase, that that first Model One. And so I just want to acknowledge this is a tricky thing when we're trying to choose because if we don't actually know, did everybody who choose three, phase three, are they really just indicating that they're they're not feeling safe right now? And they want to delay it as much as possible, and that's the reason that option felt safe to them? Or maybe they are interested in going back in person, and the only way they feel that is if it is slowed down a lot. So it just, I just want to acknowledge for the committee that the data doesn't provide us a lot of guidance. And it feels like we kind of need to acknowledge that while we're making our decision.
Mr. Demling?
So, I mean, while I might not completely agree with Ms. Spitzer that the data is completely murky, I do feel like there's a general trend towards support for Model Two. That being said, I do, I do agree with with what the general point of, you know, the one of the major limitations of a survey is that you don't know why people chose what they did. And so you're left to speculation. And so it's ultimately only a piece in the puzzle. So I think two other things that to bear my, at least that I'm trying to bear in mind as I'm making my, trying to make my decision throughout this evolving conversation here is, you know, there's, there's, this is one piece of input into deciding what the phasing model ought to be and what the justifications for phasing are, right? Like, I mean, I think the two other big benefits of phasing that that Mr. Morse is probably about to talk about, but but we've mentioned before is is that ability to to implement an operational system in the buildings that has never been done before, right? And so allowing the building principals and the teachers and the facility staff a ramp up time with a small population and with the children that are going to need it the most, right? The most assistance to physically implement that, to get that right. That's, that's a huge benefit. The other huge benefit to phasing, and I don't think this has been mentioned enough, is to distance learning. You know, so we had the emergency distance learning in March, and we all want it to be distance learning 10.0 that we've talked about ad nauseam, and that we're all anxious to see the details on. You know, the big thing that it needs, though, is a complete mental shift and total buy-in from everybody, all students and all teachers at the same time. And and the beauty of the phasing model is that is that it has nearly everyone, except for the phasing group students and staff, you know, that 10% that are there at the beginning. You know, for a solid month, everyone online in this completely new system booting up in a totally new mental model, right, of this of this new system, not just the technology, but the new, the new ways, the new synchronous, the new ways of communicating and and all that. I think that's, that's a tremendous benefit for the very reason we put in the framework document, which is, you know, it was a priority for our committees that to, that the district needs to prepare for the possibility that at some point, given the the metric conditions, again, I'm stealing Dr. Morris's thunder in another two slides, we may need to go to full remote anyway. And so so we need to make sure at the beginning that that is a fully, you know, you know, ramped up system. So anyway, that's one point. The other thing that I think, and I'm trying to follow back on an important point that Ms. Stanser raised, which is how does this vote kind of Venn diagram overlap into the question of full remote? And I guess I'll leave it mostly to Dr. Morris to describe, but this this goes right into the the notion of of establishing metrics as thresholds for going to these phases and including, including going to phase one, I think was was really key for me when I read that slide. So I'll stop there because I don't want to want to get into that too much. But to me, that's the really important pivot point. But but based on local conditions, the plan that as presented, you know, could be a fully remote model under, under those those conditions. And that's why it is is so dependent on those local conditions. And that, that's why it's that, yeah, I'll stop there.
I think if unless other committee members have questions specifically about the survey responses, it might be helpful if we let Dr. Morris talk about the next two slides where he introduces a new model as well as the the metrics. Are there any more questions specifically on the survey? Nope. Okay, Dr. Morris?
Before we do, so I do this every now and then. I just want to give Ms. Gribko an opportunity. She never has to. And I don't know if she likes that I do this occasionally, but if she, and she may be frozen on her screen. But if, you know, I always just want to encourage her to participate, but it looks like her screen is frozen to me.
Likewise.
If she's hearing us and wants to jump in, I just always, you know, especially when it's, there's a student survey. She's not responsible for the student survey, but if she wanted to offer her insights, I always welcome that. So I'm going to announce that this is on pages 12 and 13 of the agenda packet that's on our website. So that if people, I'm not going to share the screen since that seems problematic. And and so, you know, one of the things I looked at based on the feedback was adding a Model Four, which had priority groups the same, starting in, you know, in mid-September. I actually shifted all these back to mid-September, given the change in the calendar. For the elementary grade levels, it was the same, but we had more conversations with the secondary principals and Mr. Siddiq's on the call. And the problem with starting with ninth grade or just ninth and 10th grade was that as opposed to the elementary level or even most people at the middle school level, though not all, at the high school level, people teach students in all grade levels, and there's classes with students in all grade levels. So sort of as we started to kind of actualize that model, we really started to get away from looking at grade level and and then thinking about maybe the phasing would be after the first quarter at the secondary level, one day a week. And we could see how that goes and see if it could be expanded after the first semester. So that it would be, it would cut across all students at the secondary level. I think from a staffing perspective, that made sense. And also from a student perspective, there were a lot of concern in the survey about, particularly about juniors and seniors, about the years about preparing for college and and all those sorts of things. So we tried to address that in a different model. I think one of the questions that I also received is why is the elementary and Models Two and Four on a different model, different schedule than the secondary? And actually goes back to some of the same thinking, is that it's really hard to have ninth grade and then 10th grade and then 11th grade come in, just because our teachers are teaching multiple courses. And it goes back to actually the question Mr. Manino asked at the beginning, are you teaching virtually or in person? And it was hard to imagine how that was going to work with certain grade levels coming in and other grade levels not at the secondary grade level, at secondary level. It was really hard to figure that out. And also, a quarter is a good moment to pause and make a shift if we are, because there are courses that shift in the quarter. It's a marking period, especially in a block schedule, it's the halfway point. So it just, the flow of it and the logistics of it made much more sense to us the more we thought about it. And certainly, if there's any question about, you know, about that part, you know, either me or Mr. Siddiq, Principal Siddiq can can comment. But that was the significant difference. And so, and so the other part was adding a metrics phase. The original draft of this just said, based on public health data. But if you look at page 13 in the packet, it just uses what's what I'm seeing from, you know, Johns Hopkins University and other medical professionals. Fewer than 75 confirmed cases per 100,000 in the past seven days and a test positivity. Again, that'd be for Hampshire Franklin County, and a test positivity rate below 5% in those counties. New York is using the 5%, the American Federation of Teachers landed on that 5%. And some language that I saw from them, that doesn't, that's not our union in Amherst, but it is a national teachers' union. And then having a higher standard for moving between phases, that having, you know, looking for, you know, lower numbers, it's hard to really describe this stuff numerically. And then casually, in my language, about looking at 65 confirmed cases and lower than 4%. You know, this is something I'm certainly open to feedback on from from anyone in the room. It is what I'm seeing as some standardized measures that people are using around that. I think it's to Ms. Lord's point earlier, I'm not trying to convince anyone these are the right numbers, but I think it is really important to have metrics if we are going to make changes. If we're planning for in-person and we're going to make a change between now and then, it should be based on, you know, what the agreed-upon metrics, I did check with the Amherst Health Department. I talked to a physician that through Harvard, I bring them in women. So I tried to get as much concrete information from folks in the field that I could. I am not an epidemiologist. I don't claim to be. But I tried to find what are some other places doing? You know, the nice thing that would I, what I learned is the test positivity rate is actually a really good marker for whether testing capacity is keeping up. And then the confirmed cases per 100,000 tries to get it at the spread. So they're they're related metrics, but you know, one might ask, are they the same metric? But they're actually related, but distinct enough where, in my opinion, having both of them makes me feel more comfortable. And that it would have to be a, you have to meet both of them. One of the questions I got, I know, is what if one of them's true, like the, we're under 5%, but over 75 cases per 100,000? And I think it's, it's an and, not an or, from a public health perspective. So again, that's the two things I added from the last time, is looking at the phasing Model Four and then also metrics to help guide decisions. And I think, you know, my personal viewpoint, whatever, wherever you all land tonight, is that having clear metrics is going to be really important, because I think if we're, if our metric is something that's not based in public health, it's going to change every week indefinitely. It's like if our, if our metric is is not public health related, this is a really hard situation. It's going to wax and wane and, you know, like all of us do on these topics. So again, I'm, I'm open to feedback on both the models and the metrics, but those are the the changes since the last time you looked at it.
Can I ask a clarifying question back on the Model Four phasing? So if it's not by grade level, but it's one day a week, does that mean, can we infer that that means it's going to the, who's in on any particular day is determined by the courses as opposed to, you know, saying it's cohort A, cohort B? Like cohort A are going to be people in these particular courses? How does that?
So I don't know if Mr. Siddiq, I believe he's on, and if he wants to comment a bit on that. You know, we are looking at different models at the middle school level. One model would be seventh grade one day, eighth grade another day. And I think that was in some of the documents because it is a team model that is a little more possible than it is certainly at the high school level. So, Mr. Siddiq, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you agreed to be on the call, so there you are.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be divided by courses. It would be literally divided, the school would be divided in half, would create the schedule. So and we'd have to think about what would be the best way to divide it. If it would just be splitting all the classes in half and having half of them there on one day and another half on another day, or if transportation wise, it made more sense to do it geographically. But it would, it would be, my thoughts would be one of the two ways. Maybe alphabetically is another way we would do it, but it wouldn't be by subject so much.
Got it. Thank you. So what questions or comments from the committee? I'm going to start with Ms. Kenny and then and then Mr. Demling.
So I actually just have a quick question. Maybe I missed it. I'm sorry. So the, for the metrics, where do those numbers come from? Like, local hospitals? Where is that information coming from?
So, yep, it's a great question. So one of the things that's easier is the confirmed cases per 100,000 is published every Wednesday by county, so we have access to that really easily. At the current time, the test positivity rate is only by town. I've actually talked to some of our local representatives and actually with the commissioner as well. There's a group of us that are advocating for countywide data. Because I'll give you an example, there's a town not in our district, a very small town in Franklin County. They had two positive cases this week because they had very few tests. It threw their average to be at like 7% positivity, which, because it's so sensitive, because there's so few people in the town that it could be literally siblings and then the number gets wacky. So we thought having Hampshire and Franklin County was the right, right amount, because it's not just, we have school choice, right? We have, we, it didn't feel like if we just looked at our four communities, you know, the more we thought about, the metric needed to be a little bit larger than that. So we would have to do some math every Wednesday by looking at towns right now to look at all the towns in Hampshire and Franklin County to get that. It's doable. It's a little cumbersome and hopefully in short order, it will be done for us by the state, but at the current time, we'd have to do it manually.
Ms. Spitzer? Mr. Demling had his hand up first, so. Okay, Ms. Spitzer?
So my comment was directly related to this question of how we're calculating that. Because I think, would we take the average of the two counties? Like, that seems too simple. I think we'd have to, like, weight it somehow. And I, I think we'd want to just make sure we figure that out upfront and publish it somewhere. Now, like, these are the sources. This is how we're doing it. Because I think the problem is sometimes these numbers, like you just pointed out, the case, they can be really sensitive, and I'd hate to see us making really big changes in people's lives if the numbers move just a little bit and then go back one week to being another way. So as transparent as we can be and as robust in terms of like resilient to to potential small changes would be useful.
Dr. Morris?
In response to that, just in terms of that, we would, we would, like, in terms of combining the Hampshire County and Franklin County data, we would do it on the per capita basis. So, you know, that's, it seemed like that was the fairest way for averaging. It's all on average that we would do that. And in terms of the test positivity rate, we actually, you know, again, it's cumbersome, but it can be done just adding up all the towns' tests dividing by the positive rate. So hopefully, at some point, the state does that for us. They're not at the current time, but I just, you know, wanted you all to be aware that we are thinking about how to do that in a way that's fair, that doesn't skew the data. So Franklin County, because it's small, a lot smaller than Hampshire County, that it wouldn't have an undue effect. And yet, because two of our towns, two of our four towns are in Franklin County, we feel like that's relevant data. And we love our, we love our peoples.
Mr. Manino?
Mrs. Spitzer raised the question in my mind, does this mean we can go back and forth a dozen times? We, we beat the met- We, we beat the metric, we didn't beat the metric, we beat the metric in person. Virtual, virtual in person. How many times back and forth will we go?
So I think that's a real concern and yet, that's why we were, you know, this training that I spoke about at the beginning, the meeting for distance learning would be for all staff, even staff who are starting the year in person, because we can't guarantee that. You know, that these numbers won't change. There's some things we can control, there's some things we can't control. And, and that's true even for individual students. Who may start in person and choose to go virtual or vice versa, right? There's going to be, there's going to need to be flexibility on that. But I do think what you're talking about is a real issue. And if we're getting close to whatever the metric ends up being, and I'm looking for feedback on this, I'm not, again, I've checked in with, 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 with public health folks, but I don't claim to be all-knowing. And this regard, or any regard for that matter. You know, whether these are the right metrics that people feel comfortable with, but, but I think you're right, right now, Mr. Manino, right now. Hampshire and Franklin County are well under these metrics. But there is a county in Massachusetts who would be over it, not by much, but a little bit right now, looking at the data from yesterday, yes, Thursday, from yesterday. It's not near us, but you know, I think, my personal belief is you develop metrics and you stick with them, even if it causes, some challenge, because it's, it would be just a little bit over, but I think a little bit over is over. So, you know, that's my perspective. I think when we get wishy, that's not the way it was, and I'm not suggesting you were saying that, but when we get flexible with our metrics, I think we run into lots of problems, in my personal view.
I'm seeing several hands. So I'm going to go to Mr. Demling, because you've been waiting. And then I see Mr. Harrington, Ms. Seager and Ms. Hall. So, um, we'll go in maybe that order. Mr. Demling?
Yeah. So back to model four, I just wanted to say quickly two, two things about that, that I liked about the variation. From, from model two is, you know, I, I like the idea of getting all kids back sooner. You know, from like an equity piece and from like a social emotional point of view, you know, like the, the idea of not, I mean, I have to, I'll just, I just wanted to say this publicly once in our meetings, like the idea of not having eyes on all kids, for, for like 10 months, like we went remote last March, right? So to go till late January, to, for, for some of our kids not to be in the building for that long, that's, that's a concern of mine and, and, you know, we have, we have professional counselors, we have the Bright program, we have, we have teachers who even though social, emotional counselor isn't on their name tag, that's, that's part of their, of their role, right? It's part of their DNA and, that, that connection that students have and to not have that until late January was a concern. So, so thank you for that. I like that improvement. I also think from a safety point of view, it's, it's an improvement in terms of, when we think about the, the cumulative exposure to peers as, as a variable in COVID, in, in COVID risk, if you're going to go from zero to two days a week with your peers, that's different than going from zero, to one, and then a few months later to two, right? And so that, that gradual increase is also, is also a benefit. So, so I like that variation. I'm speaking to the main point I wanted to make about the metrics slide. So I'm, and I'm taking this sort of like notes furiously here about appointments from Manino made. The specific detailed points about these suggestions and comments about the metrics about an appointment Spitzer made, Ms. Kenny made. This kind of all comes back to a point that Ms. Lord made about, you know, if we're potentially voting this, this phasing, tonight, and then this, this, this plan document that includes this phasing. You know, there's, there's, there's things that we might be coming back to and my, my expectation is that we would be able to revisit, this, this, this part of it, not, not to be wishy-washy on metrics in terms of going up and slacking on them, but in terms of tightening them up, you know, because I, I just heard three really, interesting actionable things that we might want to investigate in terms of making these potentially stronger or more conservative. You know, because, because you can think about turning the dial on these things and, you know, if you read the data on phase one, if, if there are more than 75 confirmed cases, in the model that you're proposing, this is a fully remote model, right? If, if the test positivity rate is about, is above 5%, this is a fully remote model, because we're not meeting the benchmark for, for our priority phase one group. So I, I think this is, this is exactly the kind of focus for our committee's attention to be having. For, for me, it's, it's, it's an absolute requirement. I wouldn't feel comfortable, voting a phasing model without it, because, because it leads to exactly what you described, this kind of, qualitative in the air of, well, how, how actually are you going to make the call? You know, when you're under all this pressure, you know, this irreconcilable preference pressure, you know, in the future. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable voting a model that includes this data, provided that, you know, you're, you are open to the committee coming, our committee revisiting this. And that you're open to, you know, the committee potentially weighing in with, with stronger metrics, if, if that's what the committee is, comes to a consensus on. That's, that's just my feeling on, on that.
Mr. Harrington?
So I suppose this has been answered to, to an extent, I'm just kind of looking for a tighter answer on it. So if, if over, say over a two-week period, we start seeing a trend, we're, we're not quite at that 5% number. But you know, one, one week, I'll just take random numbers, one week we're at 1.5, the next Wednesday we're at three. What exactly would our response be at, at that point? And, and how close to that metric do we need to be? Or do we need to have, do we have to be over that number?
And so that, this is the kind of feedback that we want to have. I saw Connecticut came out with some, some models. And they, 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 you know, what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Harrington, is how do you build in, like a Delta model where the change is going to be included? What I didn't like about Connecticut's model is that it just was like a continuum. It didn't actually lead to a decision-making tree. It was like, you might want to go closer to hybrid or remote, right? And, and I'm not, I live in Connecticut, don't want to knock your home state, Mr. Harrington, but, but you know, I think it was, I think my personal opinion is wherever we land, there's got to be a clear metric and, and one could be, you know, if there's an increase of over 1% in a two-week span or one-week span, that triggers XYZ. But I think just being really clear on metrics and having green, and I don't think we're going to do that tonight. I mean, maybe you all will, but I, you know, I think this is your first time looking at this and this is the first time we're discussing it. But I do think it's really critical. I think it's really critical and I like the improved, the, the Delta model that you talked about. I had trouble actualizing how that would, would that functionally work, but there's also lots of experts in our area, like, you know, that we're going to be in a session Wednesday, that might be able to help us with that, because I think, I think you're right, it could still be low, but, you know, a concern could be a big jump, even if it's still under a number. And again, I'm not wed on four and 5%. That's again, what the numbers are in the field right now. I certainly am not opposed to, committee members suggesting different numbers and having that conversation. I'm very open to it.
Ms. Seager?
With the metrics, I have a quick question and then I have a comment on the models. With the metrics, I'm assuming that obviously we, we'd use the metrics to, to bring students back. Could we also combine that with the date? Is that the idea? Like, you know, we, we're not going to bring students back before September 16th. I mean, obviously because school's starting, but like the dates on the calendars that we're looking at would be part of it and as well as the metric.
That's exactly right. Yeah. It, it would be, it would have to be, both would have to be true. In order to return on X date, the metrics have to be, show that we're ready. And that's why for me, I set up higher metrics for the phases, because I think we shouldn't do it. We should have, my personal opinion is we should have more stringent metrics if we're going to increase the number of students. It kind of gets at Mr. Harrington's point a little bit different way. That you've got one metrics, what do we need to have to feel like it's open, it's safe for students to be in school? And to have to be in school, I think we'd want to have a higher metric if we're going to say, okay, now we're going to include more people. That was, again, the numbers might change. I like the improvement metric and need a little help, probably thinking about how to, how to draft that. But yeah, that's absolutely the case that it would be, it'd be both. And, you know, I think when you get to a conversation later, I'll perhaps, not about phasing, but just in general, just have some thoughts about why metrics are important, no matter what the decision you all make is tonight, that, you know, if we're not using metrics, then, well, I'll, I'll save it for that conversation. I apologize.
Okay. And the comment I had on the models was, I'm personally uncomfortable with having anybody in the school and, with the priority group starting on September 16th. I'm wondering if as a group, if other people feel that way and like moving that group even out a little bit, because what that gives us an opportunity to do is to, see how our community responds to this influx of college students. Like we won't know, I think by September 16th, what it's doing to the community. And it just would give a little more breathing space to see if that positivity rate really starts to, to climb up. Just a thought I've had.
Come back to that and just in terms of a practicality from our agenda perspective, because we are talking about the calendar later. So I think that's, that's where we want to.
But these phases all have, they have dates in them, in a sense, middle of September, middle of October, middle of November. I mean, are those not strict in any sense or?
Dr. Morris?
I think Ms. Spitzer had her hand up, so I'll defer to.
Ms. Hall was waiting. So Ms. Hall and Ms. Spitzer.
Okay, mine is just really quick, just on these, on the metrics. Could we say, can we say where they are today on these two? Or, or whatever the most recent date is that we have for that information?
Yeah, I can't, I don't have the specifics right in front of you, but I can give you the general. So, the number is around 2%, it's a little bit under, I believe, in Hampshire and Franklin County and Ms. Spitzer shaking, nodding her head, excuse me, not shaking her head.
And that, that's doing, that's calculating it the same way, weighting it and doing it per capita? Okay.
And then the confirmed cases is, shoot, I looked this morning and of course now it's gone, but it's, it's well under 50. Between the two. Franklin County is lower than Hampshire County right now. Excuse me, per capita. But even probably if you give me three minutes, I can give you the exact numbers on those, because those ones are the easy ones, they're published weekly. So I can try to find that out as long as.
No, oh, I, I wasn't looking for exact, I guess I just wanted a sense of, scale of like what things would happen, say between now and September 16th, that would change some decision-making and, it's sort of similar to Mr. Harrington's question about like seeing that delta and how that would impact decision-making. So I just, for reference, I wanted it. So that's good. Thank you.
Ms. Spitzer?
Sorry, I, I wouldn't normally be bringing this up in the middle of a meeting, but UMass just announced that they are not bringing back students who are, learning online to campus. So I, this happened at 7:45 when we were in the minute, my phone's been blowing up a little bit about this. So I, I bring this up only because I think it is directly relevant to the conversation we're having, because of the concern that Ms. Seager just raised. It, I wish, so this is, I, I just wanted to bring it to the full committee's attention, in case anybody on the committee wasn't getting this news through their, email and, and phones. I do have other comments on the phasing.
Why don't you finish, if you, if, finish and then we'll.
So, so my other thoughts about the, the phase. Did I just mute myself? Sorry. Um, are that, I was wanting to confirm that for the elementary piece with priority groups in September, because they're on specific dates, are we saying that K through one and grade two through three would all be starting at the same block of time? I wanted to confirm that. And then I, I think I just wanted to, to, to put out there, that I, I personally don't see like, there's a model five that I would potentially like to see, which is one where we really prioritize the younger kids, for in-person learning while kind of sticking with the, the, you know, more of the more model four option for the older, students, just because I think for the younger kids and I'm, I'm really concerned about what's happening in November in terms of a return of influenza and cold virus, you know, other coronaviruses that we're used to. Just because I think the overlap of the symptoms of COVID and the symptoms of the flu, and cold and the guidance that we've seen earlier is going to mean that a lot of students, may not be getting COVID, but they're going to be having a cough or a runny nose and we're not going to be allowing those kids for really good reason to be in school. So the idea that we're actually going to be getting fourth and fifth, sixth graders in on a regular basis in November to me seems, unlikely and I want them to be able to build a connection with their community in the school buildings potentially prior to, having to go remote only. So I, I don't feel quite as strongly about that for the older students, because I do think they're going to have an easier time accessing the remote learning. And I just wanted to put that out there as a potentially, like an option where we, put more effort into getting the elementary kids back in earlier.
Ms. Stanser, did you have a question?
I have just a quick question for Ms. Spitzer. Did that announcement include off-campus students or was that just on-campus students?
I'd have to, I, I don't think they'd have control over the off-campus students, but I, I have to digest the, I didn't. Yep.
So I, I think what I, just sort of reacting to Mr. Harrington's question, which, I agree, like there's, there's, we, you know, understanding sort of that, that trajectory is really important, particularly in light of, this, this new news, because I, I think getting these metrics is the most important, puzzle piece for us is sort of defining that and sort of defining what we're comfortable with in terms of, community spread and infection rate in, in, in terms of getting our, getting students into school. Like to me, that is, that is the most critical piece for us, like where, where, schools have reopened in other countries and they've had the outbreaks, it's, it's because they hadn't had clear metrics and they didn't stick to them. For, for their protocols in, in schools and, and so I do think sort of outlining that and as several of you have said, you know, being clear and transparent about what are the data sources that we're using, how are we calculating them? What are sort of the change over time and, and not that that's carved in stone, like new information might be new information and we might, you know, decide that we, we, you know, in, in a, in a, in this kind of situation, we can't be coming back every single week to sort of hash through and discuss whether we're comfortable with, with X or Y or, or Z in terms of our schools, because, with every new piece of information, people's fears and anxieties are going to be changing and, and it's on, like the, 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 having the metrics is really the guiding force for us to sort of, be able to evaluate where we are and whether, whether we're in a situation where we, you know, we feel comfortable putting, enabling students to be in, in the schools at that particular time. So I, I do, I, I would love to keep coming back to it. I don't think anybody, one of us is, is a public health scientist that's capable of saying this is the right metric. So I, I think like continuing the conversation and having, reaching out to area experts to help guide us and provide, provide that input for us to, to be able to make those decisions. And it'd be great if the state was helping us on that as well. So I, I think that's for me, the most important piece of that. And I would echo the sentiment, actually that a couple of people have said that A, it feels, 10 months feels like a very, very long time for any of our students to not have any in-person connection with, with their, with their teachers and each other. And at the same time, you know, figuring out ways that we can sort of, I like the idea of that model five, that we sort of, jigger the, the, the elementary students also to be, to have some of that sort of, whether, if we're not in model one for elementary and the other models, having those older elementary schools not coming in until November, like how do we, how can we sort of, bring them, enable them to have that connection with their school and their teachers before then would be great. And I see Ms. Kenny's hand up.
So I have just another question about the, the matrix. So, that information comes out weekly, right? I think that's what I was understanding. So if it comes out weekly, so say this week we're good, but next week, the numbers, they don't work. So we scale back to all remote learning, right? So then at what point do you, how long does that phase last? So, when do you switch back? And would that, could that like end up being a, well, this week we're in school and next week, we're at home and the week after that, we're back to school. Like how, how long will each one of those, transitions, I guess? transitions, I guess, last?
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I don't have the answer, but this has like a direct application to some other data analysis problems in stock trading. So basically what Mr. Manino and Ms. Kenny are talking about is the whipsaw problem where you have, where you have a system that's going along and you have a trigger point, right? So on this point, it's the 75 confirmed cases of the test positivity rate. So what happens when you get into a case where your test positivity rate is 5.1, 4.9, 5.1, 4.9? Do you send kids back every day or every week or every month? So what you do is you establish with, with the, the person that's running the system, what's appropriate for that system in, in order to maintain the health of the system. So in stocks, it's obviously much different discussion. So for our purposes, we would talk to the educators. So this is something that, you know, so just, just me talking. I would expect superintendent and the principals to, to think about, take this feedback and say, okay, imagine you have the most volatile situation where this is going up and down and up and down. How frequently do we want to be phasing kids in and out and teachers in and out? What, what makes the most sense, right? Is, is it weekly? That, that, to us, maybe that sounds a little too frequent, but you know, we should talk to the educators. Maybe it's monthly, maybe it's quarterly. And then, and then you recommend that. And so, and so even if you do phase, phase back to fully online and the next week, the positivity rate drops, you don't do anything until you reach that, that, you know, that minimum period that you're back. So that, that's one way to solve that kind of a problem in the, in this kind of a, the whipsaw problem. It's a really good point though.
Dr. Morris?
So, uh, so I don't disagree theoretically with Mr. Demling. I think, you know, the reality, and this is in some of the documents that Desi came out, is that at any moment we may have to move remote because of something that happens in the school. I want to be really clear about that. I'm not trying to not answer your question. But I think then for me, the data is based, you know, one data point seven days, one data points an average over 14 days. So it's sort of baking in the cake that we're getting averages. And I think to Mr. Harrington's point, especially if it's based on an increase, we may want to be more conservative about returning and more quick to, to move to remote than the, the other way around. But I wanted to answer some other questions or other comments, respond to some other comments. So Franklin County right now is 14 per 100,000 and Hampshire County is 30 cases per 100,000 in the last seven days. So that's, just wanted to be clear on the data request Ms. Hall had. It really was at the touch of the fingers. I just didn't have the screen open for that. I think, you know, my own personal viewpoint is if the committees want to start in remote and distance learning, that I would ask for a more extended period than a month. I think if we're going to, if we're going to do it, we got to commit to it. And, and I think my personal opinion is that commitment should be longer than, you know, a month or something like that, where people are just getting their, you know, getting in the flow of it, given the training that we're doing. It's also the case that I think, I want to acknowledge the public comments and some of the feedback we've heard. I think much of that is based on concerns that not about Massachusetts data, there was references to some of that, but not that Massachusetts is going to be the new Florida or Arizona or Texas. But that the situation that we're in right now, until there's a vaccine, some hope would be, would be different. And so, you know, I think if, if the committees want to make a decision, you know, based on that, I would ask for actually an extended, more extended period of, of distance learning. I'm not suggesting or recommending this, but I think if that's where the committees are, I would advocate not to have a short period like that. But really a much more lengthy period. I made me think a little differently, but also when I think about families who need to make plans, particularly some of our most vulnerable families, like leaving them uncertain doesn't make me, I mean, feel comfortable. And if we're thinking about some of our intensive needs kids and how we're going to meet those kids, kids' needs, I don't have a plan. I know we've been working on a, a backup one in case this went this way. We can't organize a plan for a month for those kids that's effective. You know, we'd have to commit to them for a longer period. So I think if that's where the committees land, I guess my request, and I can go into more detail, perhaps if this is a conversation, I, you know, I don't know what the right time is. Probably no one does tonight, but since that was directly referenced, if that's where the committees are, I'll talk about some implications and we can do that more naturally, but I would not be in favor of a relatively brief delay in the school year. I'd be much more in favor of, of a lengthier, lengthier distance learning experience so that our staff can do it. I think the uncertainty is really hard on planning. It's also really hard on families and kids to not know. Families are looking at options and they're going to make decisions. We need to support them in that. And so I guess, I, I guess I would, I think a longer period of clarity would be better for our staff and our families. That's just my personal opinion, but I did want to respond to it. And again, I don't know if this was appropriate moment for it, but since it was, it was raised on the table, I thought I'd, I'd share my opinion. I don't think the comfort piece, and I'm not suggesting that's why Ms. Seeger made her comment, but, but I don't think that's going to get, you know, significantly changed. And I think Ms. Spitzer's point about the potential as we head towards cold and flu season, I think there's some evidence that things will get more challenging later. So I don't know. That's just my, my initial thoughts. I think if, if we want to have that larger conversation or whenever we want to have it, I can speak more definitively to some of my thoughts about it. But I think if we want to go down that road, you know, I, I'd want a much longer period and, and, and want to really talk about what metrics we'd use on that topic.
I, I got a little lost, sorry, confused on, on, are you saying, when you say shortened, short versus long? I, I'm not sure what you were referencing.
So what I thought I heard was a period, maybe a relatively brief, relatively brief period of time before phase one would start. That would be after mid-September. So I heard that. And Ms. Ms. Seeger, if I heard that wrong, I apologize. That's what I thought I heard.
Meaning starting with distance learning in mid-September, is that?
Right. So I'll let Ms., if it's okay with you, I might have misinterpreted Ms. Seeger's comments and I apologize if I did.
I, I think, is it okay if I speak?
Yeah.
I, I think what I was referring to when I look at these models was interpreting them as having potential start dates based on the half months. And maybe that's not the case and it's more of just the pattern set in them and like the, what's more important in these models is the distance between the groups coming in versus the actual start dates. And it could have just been a misinterpretation of my part. So.
No, I think I misinterpreted your comment. So I apologize. I think, you know, I think it would be both, the start dates would be based on the public health metrics being in place, both for phase one in terms of the core ones of anyone being in the school, and then the, the more stringent ones for phases two and three to start. So I apologize. I, I thought I heard something different, Ms. Seeger. My apologies.
So just a clarification, just like hypothetical clarification question. So staying on that, if, if, if we vote that this first day of school is the 16th, to determine whether phase one actually is in, is in person, whatever phase one, you'd be looking, the 16th is a Wednesday, I believe, when, so you'd be looking at the prior Wednesday's data to make that determination?
Exactly. Yep. And sorry, it was a rabbit hole that we didn't need to go down because I misinterpreted a comment. So I apologize, Ms. Seeger.
What other comments? I'm, I'm going to look at folks that haven't spoken up yet to see if you had any comments. So Ms. Lord, Ms. Arlo, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Harrington, Mr. Manino. Ms. Barlow?
Yes, forgive me because I might not have gotten this right because I'm still trying to catch up. I guess it's hard for me to look at all of this information and think a lot about the metrics for the phases without thinking about what happens and defining more clear outcomes and metrics if a positive case happens in one of our schools. And so I know this isn't maybe the right part of the agenda, but it's hard for me to, to separate those two things because in the documents, it looks like more than one case. And it looks like certain, if there's one case or potentially one case, you have 14 or 18 students going home for two weeks and then they're coming back. So it's kind of back to Ms. Kenny's point to like, how, how much are we going to flip flop back and forth? And when are we going to make a call so that the teachers can focus on providing education to our students?
So I'm trying to think of what, what, I'm sorry, not to be flip, I'm just trying to see the, is it a comment or is there something you want me to respond to?
Oh, I guess, I guess maybe a little more clarification on, you know, if something happens in the school, like I guess, I guess a clearer metric for when we would maybe flip to online education in the event that there's an outbreak in one of our schools.
Gotcha. So when you say outbreak, I think of, we're certainly shutting down school if we've, if we know that there's an outbreak. The guidance that we got from Desi and from the state kind of, to your point, I think, describes what could happen if there is a positive case. You know, it talks about whether an individual is symptomatic, exposed to a positive one. And, and some of this depends on whether they're, you know, what's a close contact? Are they under six feet for longer than 15 minutes? And so I think that's where their information gets on and they do want us to contact them and the public health authorities, which we would do for that. So, you know, I think the, the language that maybe is the most important in there is when there's a suspected in-school transmission, superintendent consult the local board of health as proposed next steps. These steps may include making a decision to close part of the school for a short time, one to three days, close the school partially or fully for the longer duration of a 14-day quarantine period. And this, I think this goes back to the three feet through six feet thing that, you know, what's a close contact is closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes. And so I think that's why we do, you know, have our contract tracing folks who can, who can go into that. I think in reality, this is not in the Desi guidance. This is just my one person's opinion. If we do have a positive case, even if the guidance is that instruction can continue, I think logically, families and staff members are going to want to get themselves tested and do that. And, and that students won't come to school for a couple of days, even if the public health guidance is, is not as conservative. I think the real guidance is, I think that's just the way it's going to play out, right? I think that, that classroom will close and then we have to do the contract tracing on siblings and other, other measures around that. So, you know, I'm not trying to dismiss the public health guidance. I also just think public guided, health guidance gives us what public health experts would recommend and what we know human behavior is, is going to be more conservative than that. At least that's what we've seen so far on this front. So does that help a little bit with that question? Yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry. It took me a second to, to get it.
Ms. Spitzer and then Mr. Demling?
So I guess just to continue on two thoughts. It seems like we should definitely have some fixed metrics, but maybe creating like a dashboard of the metrics that we're looking at. So it would be, maybe these are the hard and fast ones that we're saying, you know, we crossed this line. This is a red line. We cross it. We closed down schools. However, I think there are other things that we'd want to look at. Like how, what's the, what's the testing availability in the community? Can we get tests if we need them? How long is it taking to get those tests back? Those are things that have fluctuated quite a bit over the course of this pandemic and actually really matter a lot in our ability to keep students and teachers in school if we do start to see an uptick. And then the other thing I was thinking is the absent rate, you know, so if we're seeing like a lot of kids who are out sick in a, in a time period or teachers as well, like maybe that would be something that we'd want to be looking at every week. So I'm not, I don't want to be didactic about what those metrics should be, but I think it might be really useful if we created, and I'm, I know you're doing this kind of on an ad hoc basis, but maybe creating a superintendent's update where you bring out a spreadsheet with all of the numbers that you're looking at and the trends in them and, and what, just so, if we, if the school committee is going to be brought into making this decision about the opening and closing, closing, it would be good to have numbers that we're looking at over time consistently and, and know the sources that they're coming from and, and how we're weighing them.
I might add, it's, I, I don't disagree that those are all helpful. I'm not sure we or the district are the right people to be defining what those metrics should be in the sense that like we have public health officials, we have public health, public health department. I, I, I feel like we're asking our district to step into a role that, you know, rather than, than us, than our district sort of taking on this task of tracking all of these metrics. Is there, is there an opportunity to lean on actually people whose job it is to be doing that rather than asking Dr. Morris and the district to be doing that? I feel like some of these things may be beyond, beyond what we have the capacity and competency to be able to, to decide. So, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I agree with both of you. Like on the one hand, I, I don't think that school committee members should drop everything we're doing and like ramp up and become professional epidemiologists. On the other hand, you know, this draft metrics table is, is to me, the most critical piece to the plan because it is the pivot point between fully remote learning and, and, and the degree to which students are on site. And it's, you know, frankly, it's the piece that's missing from every district plan that's gone fully remote. It's when are they coming back? You know, it's, that's completely left unsaid, right? And it's, it's, it's completely left unsaid and a lot of the district plans across the country that say, you know, we're, we're back in school. But well, when are you, anyway? So, so I, I feel like, I felt from a school committee point of view, and I, I do understand that, and we're always bumping up against this problem, right? Because of the nature of our committee in the district is that there's always this kind of gray area, right? Between the school committee's role of oversight and, and the district's role of, of operational accountability and administration. And, and where do those lines meet and to what detail do, do we actually need to vote and, and on that? And I get that, but, but I do, I do feel like for me to be comfortable voting the phasing plan tonight, I, I, I want to be able to say, I, I support these metrics as presented and I reserve the right for the school committee to discuss it in the future and recommend stronger metrics if, if we feel that that's appropriate, you know, and I don't, I don't, I don't feel it's, it's overstepping our bounds. If, if we come back and we say, we strongly recommend that, you know, that you add XYZ metric. I, I feel like the superintendent could take that under advisement and say that, okay, well, based on the medical experts I've talked with, I don't think that's appropriate. And then we could have that discussion, but that's part of the discussion, right? Like I don't think that, I don't think that input from a school committee point of view should be shut down. This is, this is my point of view. And I feel like because this process is moving so fast as, as we knew it would from, from the start of this two months ago, that, that to have such a critical piece, you know, that we're like, you, we are signing off on. I, I feel like, you know, for me, I feel like it needs to be at least as strong as presented. And then to, to have the, to have the opportunity to really digest this and, and to get to all the comments that, that I've written down, but I haven't had a chance to, you know, really think through so that, you know, next week or the week after, if, if this needs to evolve to a different place, it can't, it can't get stronger. Just, just process wise, I just wanted to note that, that we're hitting nine o'clock and, and we're also hitting August 6th. And so from a, a committee point of view, I, I'm just feeling like our responsibility is that we need to make a decision on phasing like tonight and soon, just as our responsibility for the district. And I'll just share that my, from my point of view, I have a personal preference, but I feel like it's more important for me to support the consensus committee view. I heard Ms. Spitzer talk about a possible model five. I guess I'd like to hear what that is. I, I feel like some variant of, of model two is, is, is where we ought to land up. I, I like, I like the model four. I like the improvements it, it, it made, but if, if there are others that, that have a, a clear idea of what that is, I guess I'd also like to hear, you know, short, certainly and clearly and frankly, what Dr. Morris's recommendation is as, you know, as, as a factor on a decision.
Thank you. Actually, I was, that was one of the things that was on my list was to go back and say, we, you know, we're looking at this and we're looking at the data from the parents perspective, families and students and staff perspective. What is, you know, from an administration perspective that you, you referenced before, sort of the ease of bringing students in or transitioning at quarter breaks or specific time breaks? So from, from your perspective, Dr. Morris, what, what would be your preference?
So I think if we're going to have, if we're going to do one of the model, I don't know what phasing model five is, so I can't comment on that one. It seems like, you know, the mystery one, but you know, from my perspective and our perspective, out of the four that are there, phasing model four would be the preference for a lot of the reasons that you heard from me and, and from Mr. Siddique earlier. Just seems like it makes sense. Logistically, it makes sense. I know it holds out secondary kids a little longer than some people might want, but I think, I think just it, if we focus on a small group at the beginning and particularly the groups that have the. the least access to distance learning, I think that's in our best interest. And I think, you know, I, I know some people think it's too aggressive, some people do, it's conservative, but, you know, for our perspective, I think that's where, if we land there, that seems like the best approach from my personal perspective. But again, I don't know what other models, not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be flip with Ms. Spitzer, but it may be that you look at this data and say, what about this? And, and, you know, certainly, I'm, I'm open to other thoughts on the matter as well.
Ms. Seeger, I saw your hand up.
I, I was just wondering if you could help me understand something, because I'm not sure I'm fully getting this. If Phase 1 has certain metrics, and we went with any of these models, but let's say we went with Model 4. I guess what I'm, what I'm not understanding, and maybe you were talking a little bit about this, is would we be in Phase 1 right away? Or would we be pre-Phase 1 with some remote time in there for those, that Phase 1 group? So that, that's what I'm not clear on in all of this is, clearly by the metrics now, yes, we could be in Phase 1. Would that start the first day of school? Or would you prefer, and the administration and staff prefer, like, a time in there to get, get their remote stuff under their belts and, and things settled out a little bit, and then enter Phase 1? Is, is there a, this, this is what I think I'm kind of missing in all of this is, with the time between the phases and what, and, and the initial start.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so my perspective is that the students in Phase 1 are the students who are most in need of the commodity that is in-person learning. That's a group that has not had in-person learning for months and months and months. We don't know what the future will hold. If our data is good at that point, I would want to maximize their ability to have in-person learning, so I would feel like that. I think if we didn't have 10 days before the school year, I might have felt a little differently. I frankly, you know, did have, feel a little bit differently about that. I think with, you know, actually 11 staff days before the school year starts, I feel like, you know, if, if we're going to start with kids in person, I think that's a group that is every day they're in person, even if it's a phase, like, I know some of the staff have recommended, could we, you know, almost phase it in with not full days, but partial days to start the year, I think that makes a whole lot of sense for certain populations. But that's my, my perspective is that it would, it would start at the beginning of the school year, that every day those students are in school is a real benefit. And that's not a critique of the students, it's just, that's the nature of being a very young kid and not being able to read, or not having, you know, the linguistic skills and some of the challenges that come with that, or having intensive special needs and the challenges about accommodations, modifications occurring in a virtual environment. So that's my, my perspective. And I think one of the things in, in that came up actually in some of the preschool conversation in the Amherst School Committee that they had earlier is what we'd want to also do for that, those populations, is train them, that if we do train students, so if we do go to virtual, that we're building their skill set to be more effective. We couldn't do that in the spring, there was no time. It wasn't like on March 13th, we could say, hey, let's stop what we're doing midday, we got this announcement, and let's do some ongoing work with students so that they're better equipped to access distance learning in case we need to go there. So that, we would really want to build that into the program, so that we're building the capacity of all students, but particularly some of our most vulnerable students, to be more successful in case we get there in the future. So, you know, some of that would have to be, actually be some of the initial work, and it sounds kind of strange to be training students and working and developing their skills for distance learning, but I think that actually was a missing link for many, many students who distance learning didn't come naturally, and we were trying to help acclimate students to a distance environment from a distance environment, and if that distance environment was in and of itself the barrier, it, it really led to some challenge, it has led to some challenges and will continue to. So that's just my personal perspective on it. I, I don't speak for anybody else on it.
Ms. Spitzer, you had your hand up?
I guess that kind of goes back to seeing that my Model 5 keeps getting brought up. I'll be more specific. So the, the, the question I had was trying to figure out these, the dates, so I'm assuming September 16th or the 18th is the first day back for all of the priority groups in, across all four models. That was my understanding, but then we don't actually have any dates or any sense of how long these gaps are between the phases. And so I think my concern actually piggybacks really well, and what you were saying is that for, you know, the second and third graders, and even, you know, I don't know as well, fourth and sixth graders, but I feel like for, for elementary kids, there is a, it's harder to go remote. And so there is a strong benefit for even if it's just bringing them into an environment where they can be in a tent and meet their teacher in person, and maybe get some orientation to their Chromebook and how this new, you know, app, like, can we build into this model a way that the, especially our younger kids, even if it's an outdoor kind of half a day, even if it's not a full five days a week model, can we get them in so they start building that community, building the facility with the tools? Because my big concern with a model that has, it's not that with the kids starting, elementary kids starting in November, is that it, it just seems to me like a really big delay in building those skill sets. And maybe that is another, I didn't really see that in the opening, like, I haven't seen a conversation, any details about how we might be doing a little bit of outdoor in-person or some sort of half-day kind of phase-in for those kids who are going to be starting so late. So I'm not going to be, I'd be happy to vote for the last model, if we could also in the future try to build in some of those ways of connecting with students in person that might be different from actually being in the classroom for a full day, five days a week.
Yeah, I think Charlotte, North Carolina, which is starting all virtual, and I fully support that. I mean, their numbers would be well above any of these metrics, or at least it was when I last looked. They built in something along the lines of what you're saying for elementary students, where there was some outdoor in-person kind of orientation. Yeah, I mean, it's something, I think it makes sense, I struggle if we're outside, though, it brings around some logistical challenges, you know, in terms of like wifi doesn't really extend that far outside our building, so I'd have to think through some parts like that. I think the other thing is, so much of the initial work will be on distancing, wearing masks and all that for elementary kids, that I, I have to think, I'm just being really transparent here, I'd have to think through how much content would they get, because so much of the work would really be around continuing and orientation of being, you know, physically safe and in this environment. So let me do some thinking about that. I'm not opposed in principle, I just, I see some logistical challenges that, I'm not saying they're not over, they can't be overcome, but I just, I want to think it through a little bit.
Sort of building on, maybe another, another way of thinking about that is for, for the students that will be starting all remote, in any of these scenarios, at some point, they obviously have to come into the building to pick up their materials, right, to pick up their devices and, and that. Is there, is there any, in any of these, is there any sort of initial sort of orientation when they do, or is it literally a tactical transactional exchange of, of handing the material, or is there opportunity to have at least some sort of, you know, face-to-face time, small groups or one-on-one in, in that, which might not be like that it's a in-person learning opportunity, but it's a, it's a check-in and a sort of relationship-building opportunity as opposed to a learning instructional opportunity for those?
So we haven't gotten into detail thinking about that, but this is great feedback that we can, you know, bring back to the team and continue to think about and, and try to work with. So thank you.
How are, I've heard a couple of people mention that they're, that they're feeling that they, they could vote tonight pending certain information. Does, is that how majority of people are feeling at this point, or seeing some thumbs up? Ms. Hall?
Yeah, I would just say I, I feel like I could vote on this, on the phasing tonight, or, I mean, I think the discussion has been really good and really helpful, and that there's certainly more conversation to be had around this and some work to be done, but I would feel comfortable doing that tonight.
Mr. Demling?
I just, yeah, and Dr. Morris, so before I vote on, like, so I'm comfortable voting Model 4 unless someone voices like a strong opinion for a different model, then I'm open to hearing that. But Dr. Morris, I just, I guess I just wanted to just ask the question plainly and clearly, that are you open to the committee coming back and expressing, having a discussion and potentially recommending potentially stronger metrics for, for phasing?
Yeah.
That question is, is clearly put out there.
Yeah. And so yes is the quick answer, you know, I wouldn't expect you to endorse something as complex as phasing in the first time you looked at it, and I think there's more conversation to be had on that. So definitively, yes.
And just sort of a procedural question, would we be voting on each individual model, or is there kind of a consensus that the preferred number four would be the one that we would vote on right now, or well, so?
I think it, it depends on the, I, I was asking myself the, the question, but I think it also depends on the motion that, that any committee member would like to make for their committee. Ms. Seeger?
I, I still have one more question on the models. And maybe this will get ironed out, and you can tell me if that's going to be the case. But it's the distance between bringing in the different groups of the phasing. Say we started in Phase 1 right away. How long until Phase 2? And I know there's metrics in there, right, but is there any sort of time, too? Because you could say a week later, well, let's start Phase 2, and then a week later, well, let's start Phase 3. I'm not suggesting you said that at all, I'm just wondering sort of how, how the process might go.
Yeah, so I think I can be more clear that it would be no sooner than, you know, for, for instance, on Model 4, since that's the one that people are talking about. It would be after Indigenous Peoples' Day. It would, so, I mean, a different way to say it, and I think to your point, maybe a more accurate way to say it would be no sooner than before Indigenous Peoples' Day, because it's, that's the date, but the metrics have to go along with it. And for the November date, you know, I was loosely considering, you know, after Veterans' Day, but I think a better way to say it would be no sooner than Veterans' Day. Because I think that clarifies, and, and thank you for being, I didn't pick it up sooner, but I think it's a really good point, that it's, it's no sooner than and only if the metrics allow for. Is that a helpful clarifier?
That's definitely helps me a lot, it makes me feel better and like I can vote. Thank you.
Okay. Would, would anybody from the region like to make a motion? Mr. Demling?
I move that the Amherst-Pellam Regional School Committee adopt the Model 4 phasing schedule.
Moved by Demling. I'll second that, seconded by McDonald. Is there any further discussion from the region? Ms. Spitzer?
Procedural question, should we state that it would be contingent on met, you know, data? Sorry, I'm having trouble thinking, but contingent on meeting certain metrics as set by this committee, or?
Mr. Demling?
I'll take it as a friendly amendment, but it is contingent on meeting the metrics as presented, which may be made stronger by guidance of this committee in the future. If, if such phrasing is amenable to, to Ms. Spitzer.
That's good, thank you.
And I'll second that again. Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan? And McDonald, aye. Mr. Sullivan, are you here? Not present. The motion passes eight to zero. And one not present. I'll, I'll make the similar motion for the Amherst School Committee. I move that the Amherst School Committee adopt phasing Model 4 with contingent upon metrics as defined and, and reviewed and revised by, as, by committee. Is that the amendment that we made?
Yeah, as, as
Mr. Demling?
As, as presented and as possibly adjusted by the committee, committee's guidance in the future. So something to that effect. I'm not sure something to that effect is official motion language, but.
I move that we accept, that we vote to approve Model 4 contingent on the metrics as presented and as may be potentially revised by the, by the committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer. Roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. It passes Amherst five to zero. Ms. Hall?
All right, I, since I wrote that down, I will move for the Pellam School Committee that we adopt the Model 4 phasing schedule contingent upon meeting the metrics as presented and as may be revised in the future by the committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Moved by Hall, seconded by Menino. Roll call vote, Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
And Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
And Hall, aye. Passes unanimously five to zero.
We are now almost three hours into our meeting. I believe we need to actually move to extend our meeting. And I might also suggest that we take a five-minute break. So I move that we extend our meeting by 30 minutes. Moved by McDonald, seconded by Harrington. Do we need to take, I presume we need to take a vote? Always in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and are we okay to take a five-minute break? Okay, it is 9:19, so we will return at 9:25. So I'm gaveling us back in. Great, okay, so next on our agenda item, I have to scroll back, is the vote on the back-to-school plan. Dr. Morris, would you like to, I think the full plan is in our packet.
Yep. So it's a long document, I'm not going to try to describe all of it. But I think what it focuses on is, is really all the collective work and the guidance that I've received from, from votes from the school committees over the last couple of months about priorities that the school committee has, and working with our, with our providers or public health department, and again, focusing on and prioritizing learning at the beginning of our students who have the least access to, to distance learning while still building a remote model. I mean, I think it's worth noting that the model that you, you all, that just got voted in means that students, the vast majority of students in grades 2 to 12 will start in a virtual environment. There'd be very few students in. There'd be very few students in, and that the vast majority of students at the secondary level wouldn't, wouldn't return and staff wouldn't return until November. And so it's trying to be very deliberate about starting very small with the students who have the greatest need for for being for in-person education. And if the metrics allow, then we gradually increase that. I think the one thing that I want to be really clear about in the document is that we're still unclear about the capacity to do, whether it's a hybrid model or more of the typical elementary model we've been talking about for the upper elementary grades. And that's because until we know which students are going to come back and how our staffing models go, that's just one thing that even though this is a plan that's supposed to be submitted, that will be, well, depending if you voted or not, was intended to be submitted to DASI, that's one open question. And until we get more data, we can't make a determination on our capacity to pull off upper grade education, whether that be a hybrid model, whether it be in two days a week or more than that. But I wanted to highlight that one because that's one that we've talked about a couple of times. And we're just not at a decision point because we don't have enough information to be definitive. And we'd rather be intentionally transparently unclear than to try to be clear in a way that then we have to go back on that decision later. But really, there's no surprises in the document. Hopefully, you felt like there was no surprise in the document. I know it was a really long document. It's, it's a compilation of all the things we've been talking about. I want to be really clear that, you know, I know you just voted a phasing piece. And I know some people didn't hear this earlier because they weren't on the call. Is that if there are adjustments that you all feel like need to be made to this, then that's fine. And really, it's just trying to see if this document defines and describes where the committee wants to be in terms of moving forward. And if it doesn't, then we'll make adjustments to the document and move forward along with it. But it was trying to capture in an ever evolving situation the feedback that we received from the committee and how to actualize that in a plan to move forward that was both conservative from a public health point of view. I think very deliberate in a public health point of view. I recognize there's different opinions about that. And I want to acknowledge them. You know, again, I go back to what people might not have heard earlier is that I know everyone in the committee, as well as myself, reads every public comment that comes in and considers it and considers also in less formal conversations as well. So I guess the question for the committee is, does this described, does this document describe where the committee is now? And if it does, then great. And if it doesn't, then we should talk about that and what adjustments you'd like to see. And I made a misnomer there. I should say committees. Because, you know, I, we meet in this joint way because I think it's worked well. So I really want to thank Ms. Hall and Ms. McDonald for organizing this and Ms. Stanser, Mr. Demling as well as being the vice chairs of those committees. But each committee is able to make an autonomous decision. We wrote it as one because we've been meeting that way. But I also just want to acknowledge the autonomy of each committee to have a discussion and, and have its own feelings on this matter as well. So I think I'm happy to answer any questions. But again, you know, I'd be curious, but I think reading it, hopefully you felt like, oh, I've seen this before. Oh, I've seen this before. This was from this slide, right? There was the advantage of meeting every week for many, many, or just about every week for many, many weeks and more than a month on this is that really is a cumulative process. And so hopefully you felt like there was nothing in there that seemed like it was coming out of left field because it was, it was all things that we talked about before. And I think that's all I'd like to queue up for it. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone, any committee members would have.
Mr. Demling.
So I find this one is one of those funny examples where we meet on something for a really long time, have all these in-depth discussions about the various aspects of it. And then we get to the, the decision point and then we're like, oh, and we have this massive document like, oh, okay. Like, like when we did the dual language vote, right? I remember that that final discussion was very short, even though it was a momentous vote. Anyway, as to your core question of does this reflect where we're currently at, just speaking for myself? Yeah, more or less it does. I didn't find any surprises as I, mostly as I read through it. I think, you know, getting back to something Ms. Lord said at the very beginning. You know, there's obviously a couple, you know, major variables still to be determined that, that, you know, could alter the, the environment this is implemented in. And we would have to adjust to that, obviously, the COVID data and our staffing resources. That's to be determined through collective bargaining, but those are processes that are playing out. You know, so I guess, you know, so one thing that did stick out to me, you know, if we're in a like, you know, look at it at a detailed level is, is the, this idea about outdoor learning. This keeps, this keeps coming up. And, you know, if I were to synergize the, too many articles I've read over the last two months about the science of COVID. You know, one, one of these consensus things that seems to be emerging is this de-emphasis of of contact trans, surface transmission and the increased emphasis of aerosolized transmission. And I always say that we shouldn't play armchair epidemiologist, but here I am. And anyway, it, it, all the cumulative evidence, it just, it just adds more urgency to be transitioning our education, our learning to outdoors when feasible. In addition to all the awesome wellbeing benefits of it, right? For plan and whatnot that, you know, we, I'm sure we all feel. So, you know, I scanned the entire document and I found to the extent possible, classes will be permitted to meet outdoors. Meeting outdoors increases the ability for students to physically distance. And when feasible, students will eat outdoors. That's pretty much it. And it's not that I don't believe the district or teachers are, are on the same page in terms of the spirit of trying to get it outdoors. I just, I would, you know, this larger of a document where this, where this really wants to be a core principle. I wasn't, I expected it to be a little more in the main line theme structure of how things were going to go. And maybe, maybe that's more in the curriculum aspect. Maybe that's, that, that will come out more in the detailed public forums. But I don't know if you could just sort of comment on that. Are there major aspects that aren't just appropriate for this document you're thinking about or that administration's thinking about that I'm, that I'm missing? Or, or are you still trying to push the envelope about trying to get people outside as much as possible?
Yeah, no, I think that's a valid critique. I know Ms. Chamberlain's on this call. She's someone who, not that others don't, but she just maybe, you know, sends me more interesting emails on that particular topic. And so I do think there's some resources that we are looking at. And I think some like Hitchcock Center, I know Ms. Chamberlain sent me a link of some of their work. So I think it's a valid critique that it's not articulated more clearly in this document. But I think in general, as a principle, you're right that it remains our principle. And I think, starting with the populations we start with, that's another advantage of the phasing is just when there's fewer students present, it allows for more outdoor learning, not just under a tent, but just in the same way that our gardening program, we never had a tent. And all of a sudden, we have a gardening program at our elementary schools that consistently is a high quality outdoor education. So I think, you know, that's something else. I mentioned ELL is going to be added. And I think we can be a little more explicit about that in the document. But I think you're right that there's, it's not an intentional omission. I think it's just trying to compile a lot of information, but we should be more explicit about that. So thank you.
Mr. Harrington.
I kind of took out a couple of little elements and put them in a little side document here. But so one area that I have, well, there's two kinds of areas I have a little concern. I'd like to see a tad bit more clarity is, so under the transportation section, there's a part about bus monitors, the district will make every reasonable effort to provide bus monitors. Are they going to be somewhat of a requirement on the bus? And I asked this because of the second part of, that I needed some clarity on here. I kind of don't feel comfortable putting a lone driver kind of in charge of certain things like a, there's a part, if a child presents symptoms, presents with symptoms, the child will not be permitted to board the bus. Is there an expectation that it will be the driver that deems that that student won't get on the bus? Or, I mean, I would just like to see a little bit more detail regarding that. Because after talking to a lot of drivers, that's a key sticking point that I, I know I won't speak for them, but it seems as there aren't a lot of drivers who are willing to be the lone person to make that call.
Yeah, it's, it's super valid. And I think that's some feedback we can take in and make some edits there. And I think from your comment, I don't want to, it's not suggesting you speak for the committee, but it sounds like, you know, you'd really like it to be more clear that there will be a bus monitor, not recommended. You know, and that's something that we've had conversations about. And really, that's why we're having, pushing on the conversation tonight. Because I think if the committee is going to vote a plan that does involve in-person education, then, then we get to work. It was really hard to do recruitment of who might do that, right? Like, this is the first step in a sequence of, okay, who's coming back, who's in phase one? We might not ask phase three students yet if they're coming back because that's, that might be in November. And why would we ask them in August if they're coming in November, right? Their minds are probably going to change multiple times. But once we know which kids are, what students are coming back, then we got to, you know, figure out, okay, what are the bus routes and what are the monitors and how many do we need? So I think, you know, that's a cut change I'm very comfortable making. And I know some of our administrators have raised that same piece. So that's a friendly amendment, to use your all language.
I would second that. And thank you, Mr. Harrington, for bringing that up. Because actually, in fact, it's been something on my mind ever since my kids were in grade that there's only one adult on the bus. And I can't tell you how many times I've sat behind a bus that pulled over because they had to wait for students to settle down. And, and so particularly in this environment, I do think that that should be stated very clearly that we will have bus monitors so that our bus drivers can really focus on getting our students to school safely. I, oh, Mr. Sullivan, I think Ms. Kenny, did you have your hand up also? No? Okay, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan.
All right, I'm going to, am I speaking now? Because my microphone wasn't working earlier. All right, so the, my first bus stuff. The first one is I was talking to a bus driver today who reminded me that the Federal Motor Carriers Association does not allow hand sanitizer on their buses. So they can't, you can't put a hand sanitizer dispenser on the, the steps of the bus to have kids use it on the way in and out because it can't be on the bus. And my other question was, if we are sending arms and ARHS priority groups in September, does that kick in the entire bus system? Because if we do, don't we have to provide transportation if we open the doors?
So the first question I'll have to check on, I don't know the answer to that one specifically, but I can definitely find out for you and share with the committee. On the second question, we would be transporting students at the regional level, be a very small number relative to how many students currently ride the bus. But you're right, there would be transportation offered to families who have students who fit within phase one who choose to send their students in. I'm not sure I captured the answer, answered your question clearly, though, Mr. Sullivan. Is there, did I, did I get it or am I missing something?
No, you got, you got it, that the buses need, if we open the doors, the buses need to roll.
Yeah.
Any other, what other questions? Ms. Seeger.
Just a general question. On page 22, it shows the middle school. And I guess I'm not clear on whether or not Crocker Farm students will be there because I heard they would be there. And then there was, a lot of them got moved back. So I'm, I'm just not clear if this is keeping up in that possibility because it does show the fifth and sixth graders being in the middle school and what the current thinking is on that.
Yep. So I think that goes back to the uncertainty about whether fourth through sixth grade would use a hybrid model or not. And until we know how many students are coming back. I don't think we know that yet. I think, you know, as you know, we've built all the models, assuming that 100% of students would come back. I think that's, you know, unlikely to happen. So I do think it's, I can't say definitively, you know, on that. So I have a hard time putting odds on it because there's a lot of variables at play. But certainly that decision would need to be made well, well before November when that phase would start, if that makes sense.
Ms. Hall.
So this question might be a little too specific, so I don't answer it if it is. But just in the, there are multiple references in different areas about special needs populations and then also PPE related to teachers and students in special needs populations. And I just, you know, a pretty consistent concern that's come up is teachers and staff who work with special needs populations that it's, you know, it's less about kind of like mask enforcement and more about like what the needs of those students are. So I guess, is it kind of, is it too early to talk about like the, you know, protections in place for those teachers and staff and ways to make sure that, in addition to, I mean, there's a reference to training, but maybe a little more specificity as to how, in addition to making sure the student needs are met, also making sure that those staff are protected as well?
Yeah. And so I don't want to start talking about something that would be, and I'm not suggesting you ask this way, that might be part of collective bargaining. But I think what I can say really clearly, even today, there was an outdoor meeting with someone who's a trainer in de-escalation techniques. And one of the things that came up in addition to PPE is just scrubs for people to use. So that if they're wearing kind of isolation gown, that they have something underneath it that's comfortable. And that's something that, you know, already went to our nurse manager, to Ms. Consalino, who you know, who's already investigating what would be the best products around that. So the short answer is, I think we were learning from places, public school districts, unionized public school districts who are having summer programs with special needs students right now. You know, Hadley, Holyoke, you know, North Hampton as being a couple of examples of that. And, you know, learning from their experience about what's worked, as well as from private day schools, you know, schools that are out of district placements. And, you know, I think we're, we're able to better understand, even compared to a month from now, what are tools that would be helpful for, for staff members?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Demling and then Ms. Stanser.
Yeah, so, so first, I just want to agree with Ms. McDonald and Mr. Harrington's point about the bus monitors. In fact, a member of the public had, had actually asked about volunteering and volunteering bus monitors. I understand that a volunteer workforce comes with its own challenges, but, you know, times being what they are, that's certainly something that, that is worth, worth looking into. But, but I would second that. And if it's a budgetary issue, let the school committee, you know, fight that battle with the towns if we need to. But, but the question I had was about, about parent choice and the scheduling of that. So, so a couple of things is, so with the phasing that we have, you know, a parent of a, depending on what grade you're at, your, your student is not potentially going back on site until a certain date in the calendar. And so, so the first part of the question is, is when, when are parents making the call? When, when do they, when do they make the decision about when are they sending their kid back or not? Like, when do they get that option? And the, the second part of that parent choice, parent optionality question is, we had talked in general about, well, if a parent does decide to go remote or, or in person, if that's, if their grade is in phase at that time, they could decide to, to switch periodically. That was, that was a suggestion in the school committee framework document. So, so like, when, when would that happen? Is the idea that that would happen at, at the breaks of the phases? Or, or quarterly? Or what's, what's, what's the thinking? Is it that you, you commit at a certain point and then you can, you can go back to remote whenever you want? What's, what's, what's the current status of that?
So I think, you know, I don't think like many districts, there would be any precursor to students going from in-person to virtual. But the other way around would be at the logical breakpoints. Exactly. Are you always surprised?
Unless, Mr. Demling, you had to follow on to that, your original question. If it's a different question, let's go to Ms. Stanser.
Yeah, I can, I can do that. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Stanser.
So I've had someone, excuse me, I've had someone ask me where the Bright program fits. Is that part of the special needs group?
It's not right now. And the Bright program is, so when we thought of the special needs group, it would be students who the Bright program doesn't require special needs to be a part of it. And so that's my cleanest answer for that. And so that's my cleanest answer for that. Anyone's needs that are emerging in that way can be part of the Bright program. It's not. Like a specialized program that makes a placement decision for students with special needs.
So they would follow the phases rather than being part of that first group? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kenny. So I saw on there at one point, it said something about, you know, making sure the kids eat a hearty breakfast. So they're not inclined to want a snack and take off their mask when they're not supposed to. But will the school still be doing, and then shortly thereafter, it said something about the school serving breakfast? Is that still something that is going to be happening? Because I think there are lots of families that count on school breakfast.
So that's another one that we're still working out details on, especially because of later school day, there are some limits in terms of how late breakfast can be served. And still qualify as breakfast under the federal requirements. So that is something that. Does need to be resolved and I'll get back to the committee, but I. It's, we're trying to see if, how late we can push the envelope with. Getting reimbursed for breakfast, you know, through the, the federal program, because there are some time constraints to that. I believe. So that's something that we are working on. I think the hearty breakfast was also just if students are coming in at nine forty-five and, and we understand students may not have eaten. Because, you know, there, there may not be food available to them, but for students who are, that'd just be a long time to not eat. So that was a lot of the concern was more about nutrition and health.
Ms. Dancer.
That made me think of another question. Will we be providing lunch for students who are remote? The students who qualify for school lunch?
So that's a great question. I signed yesterday or today, there's some advocacy going on because the federal government has indicated. That they're not extending the waiver that we had this spring. That allowed us to provide meals in the way we both have been the summer, but also did the spring. And so there's some advocacy going on, maybe something the committee wants to jump in on. But it's, the plan would be to do so, but hopefully the advocacy and common sense and decency, sorry, that's a little editorial, but it's nine fifty. Went out and that we wouldn't position not just our district, but other districts in, in a pretty awful place that way.
Mr. Demling.
Can you briefly describe or send us information on that tomorrow morning about what you're talking about with advocacy? Because we definitely have some members of the committee that are into advocacy and this, this is, sounds like exactly something everyone here would support.
Yes. Happy to do so.
Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, there's a section on, so on page sixteen, responses to non-compliance with health and safety requirements. So I, I'd see that, uh. It says that, you know, we will, we'll get back to it. We will. Follow our philosophy of restorative justice and supporting positive behavior. I, I was just wondering, and I know it's probably semi redundant, if, if there could be something added into that section that says that, that there won't be. It won't be punitive measures that are taken that, you know, a kid not wearing his mask today isn't going to have that follow him on his record or her record. Throughout their education as being a non-compliant being or something to that effect. No, not that, that exact weird word.
It's done by omission, not by saying it clearly. So I like that. Clear language that you offered. Thank you.
And I appreciate the, the part about the commitment to restorative justice. I like that we're reinforcing that in, in documents like this.
Ms. Spitzer.
Sorry, I'm just trying to bring up the document. So my question has to do on page seven, when we're talking about. The second to last paragraph where it says. As such, to meet the requirements of time on learning set by the state, a range of activities will be available in the morning block at the elementary level. For students attending in-person schools such as instrumental music, intervention, independent reading and others. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand, because the day's starting so late, are students who are at home going to be expected to be doing? Remote like music instruction in the mornings or what do you, because when I look at the block. Schedule further on, it, it shows like the morning meeting and then it shows, you know, some other stuff. So I, I just wanted to make sure I understood what was meant there.
So that elementary students in Massachusetts are required next year to have eight hundred fifty hours of time on learning. We're not going to meet that because of the shorter school day for in-person learning. So it's trying to fill that, excuse me, morning block time with some activities that we couldn't do. And the reason instrumental music is there and we still have to work out details is that's unlikely to happen in person next year for all sorts of health and safety reasons. And so we do need to assign some learning activities during that block. Obviously, that's not going to apply to all students every day. But to get it to eight hundred fifty hours, we need to build in some virtual experience for students. So that we meet those requirements. So, you know, we are working out those details. I think a lot of them will be. Can be couched as, you know, work that's ongoing work from school, you know, quote unquote homework. That could be done during that time period. We're not trying to stress out families or students early in the morning. But we do have to have on the schedule some pretty deliberate things. I think instrumental music is actually an interesting one. Because it is something that, again, is going to be really hard to pull off in schools incredibly valuable to our students. They love it. We believe in it. We wouldn't invest as much. Energy and, and support for the program and our wonderful instrumental music teachers. So that one is actually a really nice idea of how that could support the time on learning as well. But it, it really is, we do need to eventually have that on our schedule so that we do meet the requisite time on learning minutes.
Good. I just, I guess, I just wanted to follow up on that because I just feel like that's going to be a huge burden for any family that's. Trying to get multiple kids out the door or working parents and it may, if we can find it, if it's synchronous, I mean, if it's asynchronous and it's something you could kind of do when you have. But like music instruction seems to me to be a fairly synchronous activity, potentially, if you're learning a new instrument. So I, I guess it just seems like. I'm just thinking about my mornings. The idea that I'd also be doing a music lesson while trying to get my kids to school seems impossible.
No, we were thinking of mostly this being asynchronous and even with instrumental music or music in general. When you're doing things virtually, like if you've ever been to try to, on a group that's trying to sing. Just the, the slight differences in delay and electronic setting. Means it's next to impossible for groups of students. Like you see those beautiful videos like our high school student did last year. That was digitally Todd Fruth, our awesome high school and summit teacher. Collected those and mixed them together. That didn't happen live and none of those other ones happened live either because it's, it's quite literally impossible to do. So I think there are places even for instrumental music where there can be some asynchronous work. Or one-on-one work, but the primary focus is that it's asynchronous. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have been more clear about that in the document and I'll, I will. These are all great suggestions.
Any other questions or comments from folks? Anybody who hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Seeing, oh, Mr. Demling.
What was the name of the section that Ms. Spitzer was just talking about? I'm constructing a motion, so I just want to be specific.
It's on page seven. It's the executive summary. And so it's probably referenced later on as well.
Mr. Demling.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I don't want to, I don't want to cut off questions or discussion. I'm just looking at the time.
Yeah. Sing them.
Is that okay to go ahead?
Yeah.
I move to adopt, adopt the district reopening plan for fall 2020 for the Amherst Pelham. Regional School District with the changes to the bus monitor and non-compliance mask wearing and executive summary sections as suggested.
Second.
Moved by Demling, seconded by Spitzer. Any further discussion from the region? Ms. Seeger.
Just a question. I'm noticing that the next thing we're going to talk about is a school calendar review, but the school calendar is in this. So is that? How does that work?
Mr. Demling, I mean, Dr. Morris, sorry.
So it needs to be, the state requirement is it needs to be. One committee member got in touch with me, a suggestion for the calendar. If that doesn't need to be voted tonight, I think the big thing is generally a commitment that you would support. The beginning of the year in terms of having the 10 days plus convocation day for staff as PD. It keeps the staff return date the same, which actually I think is really important because I think staff are planning that. And so I think if there are other changes in the calendar that people want to talk about, you know, and it may not happen tonight, given the time. That's okay. I think the state just needs to know that we've, we have a draft calendar that is inclusive of 10 PD days at the beginning of the school year. Even if it's not voted tonight. Or before it's submitted.
Okay. So we'll move to a roll call vote with the region. Mr. Demling.
Hi, Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino.
Menino, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Thank you, Ms. So I'll make a motion for the Amherst School Committee. I move that we adopt the fall 2020 reopening plan as presented by the superintendent. With the changes to the bus monitor, non-compliance mask wearing and executive summary sections as suggested tonight.
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Harrington with the roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Motion passes Amherst School Committee five to zero. Ms. Hall.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion from the Pelham School Committee? I'll make a motion for the Pelham School Committee. I move to adopt the district, district reopening plan as presented with. The suggested changes to the bus monitoring, mask non-compliance and executive summary as suggested tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. All right, roll call vote. Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Barlow.
Barlow, aye.
Ms. Dancer. Try again, Margaret, you were on mute. You're on mute. Can we count that as an aye? Okay. And Mr. Menino.
Menino, aye.
And Hall, aye. Motion passes Pelham five to zero. Thank you.
Okay. We are now, we've now extended our thirty minutes already. So if we would like to continue, we would need to take another. Motion to continue. I might also look to the committee for suggestions on. Are there pieces of this that we would like to table for another meeting, assuming that that's. Allowed by public, by open meeting law. Given that we've been at this till ten o'clock. So. I think first we should extend for thirty minutes. So is there?
I move to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Demling. I'm going to take that as a region vote, as a region motion. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino. Mr. Menino.
Sorry, muted. Menino, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
McDonald, aye.
Each one, I can make a motion for Amherst. I move to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Harrington, roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Does Pelham have the same policy?
No, Chair said it's okay.
Okay. Um. We, we do have, of the next agenda items, we have the calendar review. Discussion about outreach with the community, which we talked about two already. Appointing school committee members to bargaining teams and future agenda planning. Warrant report and gifts. I might. I'm, I'm just going to look for some nods from my public meeting experts, Dr. Morris and Mr. Demling. About whether we can move to table some of these agenda items and, and tackle only the appointing of. Committee members to the bargaining team and the future agenda planning. Mr. Demling.
As far as I understand it, there's no legal requirement and it's, it's your chair's discretion and committee's will.
How does the committee feel? Like that plan? Okay. So in our, when we get to future agenda planning, we'll talk about when we'll address these other agenda items. But so we'll move on to. Item E, which is appointing our school committee members to the bargaining team. I, in, in looking at a, a bunch of policy, policy that we need to look at in light of. Operating schools in the, in a pandemic, we, we have several policies that the policy subcommittee has been. Drafting, but, and as we were doing that, discovered there is a policy about appointing members. That I've also since learned is, is actually. Needs updating. So it's in the packet, but there's. Pieces of it that we know are not. Are void. Namely, the negotiating agent is, is the piece of that. So just to be clear that that was, I think we just take that as a reference point. As opposed to. Our guidance right now. So the policy team has a lot to work on. So we have. I believe, Mr. Harrington, that you had been appointed as a, as a member for the UFCW. So are you willing to continue? In that appointment?
Yes, I am.
Are there others that are interested in serving with Mr. Harrington? It's not a requirement.
Is it better to have more than one?
Dr. Morris.
So yes, and, you know, I think. There's other bargaining groups that might need members. So I wonder respectfully if Ms. McDonald might want to. See if there's a full group who want, might want to be involved in some of the other bargaining groups and then come back to. Mr. Harrington and his need for partners or desire for partners after. We can maybe look at some of the other groups because there are, there are three bargaining groups I, I shared with Ms. McDonald earlier, I think. Particularly for the APEA, you know, that's three bargaining groups within ones. That is a more complex. Set of bargaining groups, just because of the nature of, you know, it's, it's three distinct units within one. So I don't know, just my suggestion is. See who can participate in, in that one and see if there are extra members who are willing to join Mr. Harrington. And some people may have an interest more in, in working on USCW. So I don't want to be dismissive of that. That may be more of someone's interest too. And some people may have an interest more in working on USCW, so I don't want to be dismissive of that, that may be more of someone's interest too, but.
That's a good suggestion, thank you. So why don't we then jump to that one, the APEA bargaining team? And I know that folks have asked sort of what does that time commitment look like and sort of giving, maybe it would be helpful, Dr. Morris, if you could give us an idea, since I think we have a lot of or multiple new members, that it might be helpful to understand sort of what that commitment could look like.
Sure, so we've been already been in contact, looking to start that process next week. They've shared with us that they, you know, would like, they being the APEA, they'd like to have, which is pretty typical, session on ground rules, and they would look forward to having sort of two hour timeframes for negotiating, again, very typical and makes total sense to me and to Ms. Cunningham as well. So they'd like to start next week. And they'd be during daytime with the times that were suggested to us. So I think the first session perhaps would be an hour and a half, and after that, trying to block out two hour sessions. And, you know, it's a little hard to predict how long these things go, but we try to maintain really good working relationships, our associations, and part of that is bargaining good faith, and it's a really important thing that school members can be a part of. And so, you know, I would think probably given the timeframe, that it's August 6th, that probably I would imagine two times per week would be, you know, a reasonable expectation for the next few weeks.
And primarily daytime?
That was, yeah, that was what worked best for the members and we try to work around their schedule as best we can.
Any volunteers? So this is a region commitment, correct?
So typically, according to policy, and I think it's in the packet, that the region does assign negotiate, I'm going to double check that because I'm sorry.
Oh, I have that up.
Great.
It's.
Yeah, so the regional school committee will appoint, you know, everything's framed as in, oh, the first sentence, Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee is responsible for negotiations with employee bargaining groups. So just that first sentence of that policy.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, took me a second.
Yeah. Any volunteers? Ms. Lord? Oh, you're volunteering?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Anybody else? Given the complexity of this one and the three units, I do think if there's another person, it would be helpful to have two. And particularly if we can have two people from different towns. Sort of in the spirit of the policy that is old. No other volunteers? I'm just trying to think, I think probably people are nervous about the time commitment and particularly daytime because I think almost all of us have daytime work commitments, jobs that pay us so that we can do this volunteer work. So is there flexibility in terms of being on the negotiating team, maybe? I'm just thinking out loud, if there's any ways that we can think about this that might make it easier for somebody to see themselves participating in the negotiating team? Oh, sorry, Ms. Spitzer, I couldn't.
I can't, I have no starting. My daughter's childcare has closed for the rest of the summer and I have a job that I'm already reducing my hours on significantly, so there's absolutely no way I could participate during daytime meetings. Potential, I'd be happy to consult or think through, but I'd be jeopardizing my employment if I were to volunteer. I'm not putting up, so if there's a way we can do some sort of evening consulting, I'd be happy to work with Ms. Lord or Mr. Harrington. I think this is really important and I don't want people to think I'm shorting my duties, but the pandemics affected all of us in our ability to with childcare and work requirements, so.
Totally understand, yep. You don't have to apologize for that. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think any addition, any ability that we have to contribute is appreciated and you know, I mean, you know, to the degree we can, I think is beneficial, so I don't think if that's five minutes, you know, over the course of the entire negotiation, that's five minutes that we didn't have, that's a point of view that we didn't have, and I think that would be beneficial, so. Obviously, you know, we don't have a massive stable of people that are running to and able to volunteer, and that's no criticism, I'm not raising my hand either, you know, so. You know, it's a tough situation all around, so I don't think you should feel guilty if you can only volunteer a little bit and if you can't make a lot of or most of the meeting, I think anything you can contribute would be awesome. And I would totally support any kind of a flexible arrangement like that.
I'm seeing, I'm not seeing anybody objecting to that, to that suggestion, so I think we'll we'll point Ms. Lord as our, on our negotiating team and Ms. Spitzer where we're feasible. Thank you both. And then we have AFSCME. Dr. Morris?
So that's AFSCME, you know, I talked to Ms. Cunningham before the meeting. We were successful in not having a school committee representative this spring to develop a MOA with AFSCME. I think we're optimistic that similar thing could happen, so if there's a volunteer that wants to join, that's great, but I think you know, from Ms. Cunningham's point of view, and I trust her very much, it'll be if there's not another person who can dedicate the time, we can just report back to the committee in executive session how it's going. We could always amend that, but I think given that, you know, all the things that people shared about joining the other negotiating teams, Ms. Cunningham feels confident and that we can, we can work that out. And if, you know, something changes, we'll let you know, but, and if someone wants to join it, that's fantastic, but people shouldn't feel like they need to push themselves on that one.
If the, if the rest of the committee is comfortable with that, I would, let's proceed as Dr. Morris has suggested. I'm seeing nodding heads, so, okay, great. Well, thank you, Mr. Harrington, Ms. Lord and Ms. Spitzer for stepping up. Truly appreciate it. Okay, so future meeting planning. Mr. Menino?
A suggestion for a future item? I appreciate Dr. Morris's clarification on distance learning, how it would be taught. I think elaboration would be welcome. I fear this won't happen, but the Boston guidance is that teachers will simultaneously teach in class and online. I don't know how they're going to do that. I don't think we plan on that, but I would like distance learning discussed in greater detail.
We also have, we have the 2020, 2021 calendar review. Outreach.
At some point, we need to do the evaluation as well. I'd really like to make sure that gets done, even if it means lowering the bar a bit on we put into it this year, but I want to make sure it gets done.
Do we have policies that have been on previous agendas? Yeah, we did the policies off. I don't know the status of the letter that we were going to, that we also had had on the agenda for tonight. We may want to rethink or relook, no, actually, that still pertains, I would say. I'm looking at Mr. Demling because you were spearheading that letter writing.
Which policy, I don't know?
It's not the policy, it was the letter for rapid testing site.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll have to think about that. Yeah, we'll have to think about that. It's too late for my brain to digest the implications of the recent news. But while, while we're talking about agenda planning, I was thinking our minutes are getting kind of backed up and all over the place, which is totally understandable, given the flurry of meetings. But since these are important meetings, and I don't want to get us into an awkward position where we're just saying, yeah, 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 about things that maybe we say things and we don't. Anyway, I think maybe it might be good to maybe batch these things up where maybe maybe we get like a whole bunch of them together mailed out to us where we can have the time to like go through them all and take a bunch of notes, and then we have an agenda item that has like, you know, a half a dozen meeting approvals.
Yeah.
A minute approvals, and we're able to go through them, you know, conscientiously as opposed to just realizing that they're at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
How the public feel about that.
I do agree, because at some point, we're going to have to approve them, and the longer we wait, the so do we want to look at Tuesday? Or, Dr. Morris?
So just, it depends whether the group wants to continue having joint meetings or not to a certain extent. So Pelham, the next meeting Pelham could have would be on Thursday because of OMLM posting. I'm just looking at the items you mentioned, calendar review technically is a regional decision. Again, I'm not suggesting that our Pelham friends wouldn't have thoughts, but it is a regional item that, and it always has been, to my knowledge. The outreach, distance learning planning, those seem like joint items. Policies, that's up to the chairs about how they view that. Typically, they go through region first. You know, I've added advocacy for food service in addition to an email that may be something that the committee actually wants to take up. So it may be the case that we want to think about what needs to be joint meetings and then perhaps what needs to be, particularly a region meeting as compared to a joint meeting, because some of the items, I mean, region, we could frankly post tomorrow and meet on Tuesday on some of these things, and a joint meeting either could be Thursday or waiting till the next week. You know, the one that seems pressing to me that that's a joint is kind of the outreach piece. So that's the only one that's sort of a bummer, that if we met Tuesday, I don't know if we'd have the goodwill of our Pelham colleagues to roll with what the region came up with in terms of outreach, but that one seems like really timely and perhaps not worth waiting. Sorry, I'm trying to solve issues five hours in, I may not be doing a very coherent job, but.
Understood. Ms. Hall?
Yeah, so I mean, I have been in communication with the town clerk and it's possible that we could get an agenda to her and post tomorrow, so could we maybe have like an aspirational approach for a joint meeting on Tuesday and then the chairs, sorry, McDonald could scramble a bit tomorrow and try to figure this out as early as possible and then communicate to the rest of the group?
Yep, and I think we'd also want to have the executive session, given that negotiations are starting soon with about negotiations with the full committee so that the people who are involved in negotiations get to hear from the full committee about the charge and some thoughts so that that process can start with the full committee's input.
That sounds good.
So I guess tomorrow morning, we'll try to, Chair and I will try to wrap our heads around this and see what we can do.
Sounds good. Okay. Okay. Ms. Seeger?
I just want to ask a basic question of, I know we're talking about Tuesday. Are there any sort of on the calendar meetings or words are not flowing right now? I haven't been able to keep a firm track of when meetings are going to happen. Are there any just sort of standing times that the regional committee meets that I should have on the calendar of like every second Tuesday, or is it really ad hoc at this point? I just want to, yeah, okay. Thank you.
We determine our schedule at the beginning of every year, so probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll be doing that for the, for the, you know, through June of 2021. But yeah, we ran out of pre-scheduled meetings back in June.
Okay, this is a pandemic sort of. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And anybody from Amherst, would you like to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Spitzer? Seconded by Harrington, no discussion. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Amherst is adjourned. Ms. Hall?
All right, Pelham, make me proud.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Dancer. All right, roll call vote, Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
And Hall, aye. Pelham is adjourned.
I move to adjourn the region. Is there a second? Second. I'm moved by McDonald, seconded by Spencer. Roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The region is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Aye.